So hopefully we'll, we'll be in and out in an hour and a half or so. And have you guys an opportunity to answer or ask some questions of us? As it regards to a number of different topics that we have on the agenda. So with that, I'll kind of just run through what we're going to, what we are going to talk about today. My name is Nate Boudreau, the Executive Director of USA Water Ski and Wake Sports. I do know many of you guys and girls out there. I appreciate you guys joining us on the call today. Going to be also joined by Bob Archambeau, who's the President of USA Water Ski and Wake Sports, as well as Doug Robbins, who is the Chairman of the Board. So Bob and Doug at some point will, will be available to, to answer any questions as well as myself. We'll go through a, a quick little slideshow here. Well, I'll kind of give an update on some various things like I mentioned before. We do have a special guest or two joining us as well from Epic, who is our insurance broker and our risk management partner. Randy Melcher and Kelly Primbernow will be joining us to give a, a quick update on the state of the insurance agent or industry, which will help sort of set the stage for the tail end of the agenda, talking about SafeSport background screens and then the, the affiliation with the USOPC. And then we'll leave, obviously, most of the time at the end to open it up to member questions that you guys may have of myself, of Bob or Doug. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and actually turn it over to Randy to give us an update on the insurance side. And then from there, if you have specific questions for Randy on the insurance, he'll be happy to answer them, but then we're going to let him go as we get into the rest of the agenda. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to, to Randy. I think we've got Randy off of mute.
Thanks Nate, apologize for that. Can everyone hear me now? Okay, good. So thank you, everyone, for your time this evening. Over the next 10 or 15 minutes, what we wanted to do was give sort of a, a brief highlight of our agency and our experience working with NGB and other sports organizations. We're going to talk about some of the key developments over the last X number of years that have had a material impact on amateur sports and also the insurance industry. Ultimately, what the state of the insurance industry is today, some of the trends we're seeing. And then we'll talk a little bit about USA Waterski's insurance program. So to kick it off, you know, our agency was founded in 1994. We were originally known as Entertainment and Sports Insurance Experts. We provide risk management and insurance solutions for clients in the entertainment and sports industries. And we're now part of Epic Insurance, which is one of the largest insurance brokerage firms in the world. We work with a lot of amateur sports associations and national governing bodies. In fact, over 20 national governing bodies are clients of ours. We work with professional sports leagues, teams and associations. So organizations like the PGA Tour, the ATP Tour, the WTA, Atlanta Braves and Atlanta Hawks are examples of longstanding clients of ours. And I think the next few slides will just provide a sampling of those, some of those clients. So over the past several years, there have been a number of, of significant developments impacting amateur sports. In 2017, the last of the 50 states finally passed concussion related sports laws. The first state was Washington. And ultimately it created standards for how to, you know, concussion awareness, concussion training for coaches and officials and, and parents. Ultimately concussion management protocols and then return to play protocols. In 2018, the federal SafeSport legislation was signed into law, which ultimately created a new standard of care for youth sports organizations when it comes to abuse prevention. Everything from abuse and molestation awareness and prevention training to comprehensive background screening. And it also established mandatory reporting of suspected abuse situations to law enforcement within 24 hours. In 2019, which had a major impact, states began passing laws that either temporarily suspended the statute of limitations when it comes to abuse claims, or in some cases eliminating the statute of limitations entirely when it comes to that. And so especially when it comes to minors, typically the statute of limitations clock wouldn't start ticking until a minor reached the age of, of majority, which is 18 in most states. And then once that occurred, depending on the state, there was a two to seven year typically window of time for an abuse claim to be made. But with that either being temporarily suspended or eliminated in certain states, that opened the door to, in, in some cases, an unlimited window of opportunity for somebody to bring an abuse claim. Obviously, in 2020, the, the pandemic hit the United States, which resulted in a suspension of all amateur and professional sports activities for a period of time. Eventually, those activities were able to resume, subject to compliance with a certain COVID guidelines and return to play requirements. And then a number of states started passing immunity legislation when it comes to COVID. 2021, we sort of returned to the new normal where vaccines became available. States lifted, most states lifted the COVID restrictions. More states considered immunity legislation, but no federal immunity legislation, you know, has ever been passed. And unfortunately, in 2021, and, and obviously this year, we've experienced new variants of COVID that have been discovered and, and have impacted things.
So this slide here, everybody, hello, everybody, Kelly Primbernow here. I just want to kind of go over some of the headlines to set the groundwork for the next few slides because a lot of the information in these headlines is things, when these things came up, this is why the insurance industry has been seeing so many challenges. And there's been a lot of changes in coverage that's offered to organizations and limits that are offered to organizations. So it really started to stem from the Larry Nassar situation, which as you can see at this point, you know, is already four years old, which is really hard to believe that it's been going on this long. But all of the issues with USA Gymnastics and Larry Nassar, it all just kind of had a snowball effect. So just taking a look at some of these headlines, you can see, you know, US Olympic Committee gets involved. And the organization Gymnastics has to file for bankruptcy due to allegations, you know, arising out of abuse claims. You know, there's things that their insurance policies, you know, may not have covered that, you know, USA Gymnastics has to, to cover, you know, out of their own pocket. Then obviously USA Gymnastics is not the only organization that, you know, is impacted by this. We're seeing AAU in the headlines. We've got University of Michigan. We've got polo, we have Boy Scouts. So Boy Scouts was very in the news a lot as far as headlines go. And every time a new article came out, the amount of allegations that were, you know, being made against Boy Scouts, it just grew exponentially. And part of this is because of the statute of limitations being lifted. You know, so, you know, to Randy's point, in certain states where it's maybe two years, five years, seven years, we're seeing claims impact organizations such as Boy Scouts, such as USA Gymnastics and many other governing bodies that are going back 20, 30 and 40 years to the point where, you know, the, the perpetrator may not even be alive anymore. And so the organizations are being held accountable, you know, for these situations that took place decades ago. And so to, the Boy Scouts right here was an $850 million settlement, which is just, it's unbelievable. And so the insurance companies that were defending Boy Scouts for these claims, you know, it impacts the entire industry. It doesn't impact just the carrier that was, you know, involved in the claims for Boy Scouts. It impacts the entire industry. And same for USA Gymnastics, who, you know, their, their settlements looking at about $425 million. So again, insurance carriers that, you know, were representing USA Gymnastics have obviously taken a large financial hit. And it's impacting the entire industry for sports organizations, for national governing bodies, for, you know, just youth serving organizations, Boys and Girls Clubs. You know, Boy Scouts, obviously, religious organizations that, you know, have, you know, Sunday schools, daycares, anything that has a youth exposure has really been impacted by just these few headlines that you're seeing on this slide.
Yeah, and the thing to add is this, the, the frontline insurance carriers that are underwriting these risks are being re-insured through the same capital markets. And so even though the Boy Scouts organization, for example, is not a youth sports organization, the same capital markets that are reinsuring traditional youth sports organizations are on the Boy Scouts risk as well. And so those reinsurance capital markets are in many cases dictating some of the changes that we're going to be talking about on the next few slides. So, you know, with some of these developments, you know, we're going to talk about the, what we're seeing in terms of trends and, and things within the insurance marketplace. So there's always been a, a limited number of insurance carriers with an appetite for amateur sports risks. And right now, we're in what's known as a hard market cycle where there's greater underwriting scrutiny, more restrictive coverage terms and conditions, and increased pricing that typically is, is going to apply. And really, the, the primary driving forces behind this are underwriting concerns with things like concussion and traumatic brain injury claims, sexual abuse claims, the long tail exposure for those types of claims, particularly with the statute of, of limitations being either eliminated or suspended in many cases. And so as, as Kelly mentioned just moments ago, we're seeing claims from 10, 20, 30, 40 years ago or more hitting clients. We're seeing a higher frequency and increased severity of claims. 10 years ago, an abuse claim might be $75,000 to $125,000. Today, that same scenario could easily be north of $1 million. Increased potential for class action lawsuits, concerns about the financial solvency of organizations with bankruptcy filings, pandemic issues, and then concerns about COVID-19 challenges. Whether it's, you know, GL claims in states where COVID immunity legislation hasn't been passed, property business interruption claims, DNO bankruptcy claims, or employment practices liability claims where employers can't provide promotions, have to have layoffs, whatever, because of the COVID challenges. So some of the trends that we're seeing as a result of all of this is, you know, within the amateur sports space, more declinations for this class of business. And in fact, within the NGB space, unfortunately, there have been four carriers that have historically written probably 90 to 95% of all NGB business. And in the last six months, two of those carriers have pulled out of the marketplace altogether. One of those carriers is Philadelphia Insurance Companies. And Philadelphia was USA Waterski's longtime carrier partner since, I believe, 2010. And so at renewal, which Kelly will talk about a little bit later, we had to find a new home for a number of USA Waterski's insurance policies. Increased underwriting scrutiny to qualify for coverage. So one of the things that we do whenever we approach a new carrier about quoting for one of our clients is, the carriers always want to see a historical loss experience because that gives them a feel for how has the particular insured managed their risks? And, you know, what sort of exposure and, and premium levels, if things were to continue similarly, would need to be generated to be able to fund those losses. And in the past, you could get away with about a five to six year window of losses. Today, underwriters want to see a 10-year window because of that long tail exposure, the amount of time it takes for youth claims, concussion claims, abuse claims, et cetera, to develop. The other thing that the carriers insist upon in order for insurers to qualify for coverage is they want to see compliance and enforcement efforts. You can't just have rules and regulations that are in a manual that sit on a shelf and safety requirements and SafeSport requirements and things of that nature. They want to see how an organization is making an effort to ensure that those rules and regulations, SafeSport requirements, training requirements, background screening requirements, et cetera, are being complied with and enforced down to the club and the grassroots level. And if an organization can't demonstrate that, they'll either decline to quote the insured or they may quote, but they're going to say, look, we're going to exclude abuse. We're going to exclude concussion. We're going to exclude, you know, participant liability, which is, you know, would be gutting the coverage for an amateur sports association. And so being able to demonstrate that, that commitment to compliance and enforcement is critical to being able to qualify for coverage. Carriers are taking the position that, okay, we'll offer coverage, but we're going to be, we're going to restrict, you know, some of the coverage and the limits that apply. And so for example, we're seeing carriers that say, okay, if we're, we're willing to offer abuse coverage, but we're going to apply a per perpetrator cap. And that, you know, is in response to the Larry Nassar situation, where you had a single perpetrator abusing hundreds of victims. And so carriers wanting to limit their exposure to abuse claims had pretty much across the board introduced per perpetrator caps within policies. Some carriers are saying, look, we're going to only offer coverage on a claims made coverage form basis rather than an occurrence coverage form basis. Given the long tail exposure on abuse claims, we've always preferred occurrence based coverage. And fortunately for USA Waterski, we were able to maintain that as part of the renewal. Defense costs, you know, we've historically written policies where defense costs are in addition to the applicable limit of liability. And we were able to maintain that again for USA Waterski. But there are some insurers that are having to agree to accept defense costs within their limit of liability. And defense costs can be a very material portion of the overall cost of claims. And then in many cases, even if the primary coverage includes all of the, the coverage that you would want, many carriers are introducing limitations or sublimits or exclusions within the umbrella access programs to, to cap their exposure. The other things that we're seeing include higher deductibles and retentions, certainly increasing premiums, and in many cases, all of the above, you know, a combination of all of the above.
Yeah, so to...
Kelly, did we skip a?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so do you kind of, you know, everything that Randy just talked about, you know, is a big picture. But at the same time, it's impacting every single organization that needs insurance. And so, you know, Waterski, we have handled the insurance for Waterski for over 10 years. And Philadelphia was that carrier partner for at least those 10 years, if not a little bit longer. So this year, expect of January 1st, we were notified at the, you know, the last quarter of 2021 that Philadelphia was no longer willing to be the carrier partner for USA Waterski, which didn't come as a surprise. We hoped that they would maintain that relationship, but they had started already non-renewing national governing body business. They were declining, you know, to write any new national governing body business. And again, you know, it stems back to those headlines and it stems back to what the carriers, you know, have had to pay out over the last three, four years for claims going back again decades. It's just impacted the entire market. So unfortunately, Philadelphia took that stance to non-renew coverage for Waterski. And we, you know, we were hopeful that we'd at least have one quote to present to Waterski. Many other organizations, you know, we get to the point where we barely get one quote to put on the table because there are only a handful of carriers interested in writing sports organizations. We were, we went out to over 15 markets for USA Waterski and we were able to deliver three insurance options. And they all varied, you know, with different types of coverage that the carriers offered, different limits. So there was a lengthy conversation with our team and, you know, Nate, the Insurance Task Force Committee to kind of review all of the options because two of the options that we received had very limited coverage. They were limiting concussion coverage and they were limiting sexual abuse and molestation coverage. So, you know, our role as a risk manager for USA Waterski is to, to provide guidance as to, you know, what kind of rules and regulations need to be out there to the organization, what policies and procedures need to be followed and implemented and enforced, but also to provide adequate coverage, you know. And we're, we're not in the business of, you know, just recommending bare minimum. Unfortunately, we see what these claims can result in. We see, you know, seven figure, if not eight figure claims impacting our national governing body book of business. And so when we're in a position to deliver, you know, coverage, as much coverage as possible, that's what our recommendation is. You know, and this, at this point in the insurance industry, sometimes the only coverage that's available is what we would consider our bare minimum recommendations. But fortunately, the option that we were able to secure for Waterski for the renewal, we were able to keep concussion coverage, which was wonderful. We were able to keep participant legal liability coverage for all the participants, you know, that are out there on the water. And then also maintain abuse and molestation coverage. In fact, the option that we were able to renew with is providing higher limits of abuse and molestation coverage for Waterski than has been traditionally available in the past. And, you know, part of that is because we were able to demonstrate to the carrier that the organization is committed to, you know, abuse prevention. And that's background screening, that's SafeSport. You know, that is getting everybody in the membership educated about these things so that when the time comes, and it's, you know, it's really a matter of not if, it's when, you know, there could be a significant claim that impacts the organization, you know, members and clubs and, you know, the national office are going to be able to go back and say, these were the steps that we were taking to prevent a situation from happening. And that's what insurance carriers need to see. They wanted to see it in the past, they need it, they require it now to even offer this coverage going forward. And frankly, organizations can't afford to not have abuse and molestation coverage. You know, if there's one allegation that comes up, you know, the defense cost would be, you know, could very easily be three, four times what an insurance premium would be for abuse and molestation coverage. So we were really pleased to be able to offer this to Waterski. And again, it's just, it's a, it's a response from the market as to the steps that Waterski is taking, you know, with preventing, doing what they can to help prevent abuse situations from occurring in the sport.
Yeah, and one of the things I'll add, and Nate, I'm sure you'll go into some of this later, you know, but you've got the federal legislation, federal law that applies, but you also have state laws that apply when it comes to abuse and molestation prevention and background screening. And, you know, just most recently, California just passed a law within the last four to six weeks that, you know, again, a lot of the misnomer is that, well, the federal SafeSport legislation only applies to USOPC NGBs. That's incorrect. Most of the state laws, like California's, for example, are not just amateur sports associations. They're any youth serving organization. So it's, it's an organization that could be completely non-sport related, but if they have programs for the benefit of youth, they have to comply with these laws. And so I guess that's some of the misnomers that are out there in terms of what these laws are, who's required to comply with them, et cetera.
So that completes our presentation. You know, at this point, we're happy to open up to any questions you have as it relates, you know, to the insurance program for Waterski or anything that we discussed.
Is there only one policy for the NGB or can it be broken down? What applies here?
Yeah, great question. No, there's a, there's a primary general liability policy that covers USA Waterski's day-to-day operations, their role as the national governing body, and then all of the sanctioned and approved events and activities. And then there is a separate umbrella excess liability policy that provides X, coverage, excess of the underlying primary general liability policy. And if you go to the USA Waterski website, there's an insurance resources section. And then specific to sanctioned events, there are insurance summaries, there's an insurance fact summary, a brief highlight document and, and some other insurance resources that provide more details regarding the coverage and how it applies.
Yeah, and it's, we have a broad, you know, named insured on there. Waterski, USA Waterski as an organization is not the only one that's insured from these types of claims. So your members are covered and your member clubs are covered and your local, you know, the local organizing clubs are covered. So in the event where you may have an abuse situation that has occurred, you know, at a practice, at a, at a tournament, you know, and the, you know, the perpetrator, the alleged perpetrator is brought into a lawsuit, the club may also be brought into a lawsuit. Waterski, you know, national office would be brought into a web, or a lawsuit. So I mean, the policy is extending coverage to the members as well in those situations. So, you know, again, that's why it's so important that the abuse prevention and SafeSport education be, you know, passed through the entire membership so that you're aware of reporting requirements and things like that because these matters have to be addressed very quickly. Insurance carriers need to know, you know, the, the chain of command, who's responsible for what. And in this litigious society, you know, the lawsuits name anybody and everybody. So to have that defense coverage available under the Waterski policies, just, it's priceless, really.
Okay. And then the next question is, when you talk about the abuse side of this on the policy, are you talking 18 and younger or? What are you, what are you addressing there?
Yeah, I mean, typically, you know, when it's adult to adult, it's, it's more of a sexual harassment type scenario. When abuse is referred, it's traditionally considered, you know, it, having to, you know, involving a minor. But abuse can be adult to minor. But one thing that is overlooked is in many cases, it's peer-to-peer. It could be minor to minor. And so there, there are perpetrators can take different forms. So, but yes, when we refer to abuse, traditionally, it's where a minor is involved.
Okay, one last question then, cycling back to the question on how does this apply? Is it, is it one policy to the NGB? Or can it be broken down to other segments? How can you do that?
Yeah, so it is with, within, we, again, we mentioned earlier, we place coverage... Yeah, so it is uh, with, within uh, we, again, we mentioned earlier, we place coverage for approximately twenty other national governing bodies along with a number of other large amateur sports associations. And in most cases, these programs are structured as master insurance programs where there's a single set of policies that can provide coverage um, to the NGB or the association. In USA water ski's case, it includes the, the sport disciplines and division, uh, divisions, the uh, the member clubs, officials, coaches, et cetera, um, local organizing committees, et cetera. They're all included within the broad form named insured wording. And then we have USA water ski's policies uh, structured where we've got a per-event general aggregate limit that applies. So uh, within the primary GL policy, separate, normally a, a policy will be written where it's just got a single annual aggregate. And we have your policy structured where a per-event general aggregate limit applies. Um, so yes, it is a master insurance program, not separate policies for each individual insured.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify one thing, the general liability is per event, um, as Randy mentioned. Um, but the abuse and molestation coverage that's available is an annual limit. Um, so with, and that would apply to all events, all clubs. Um, and that's, it's five million dollars per any one um, occurrence abuse-related, seven million aggregate annuals. So you do have a, a potentially up to seven million dollars in one policy year, um, you know, to cover USA water ski and its members and its clubs.
There's actually a chat question that's asking about coverage for each club and each official. So could I assume that because of the aggregate, uh, it would depend on the circumstances?
Yeah, but as, yes, and as long as the alleged um, accident, whether it's a bodily injury, whether it's an abuse situation, uh, whether it's concussion, you name it. The key is that it, you know, occurred during a USA water ski sanctioned or approved event or activity. And as long as it did, then depending on the specific allegations, facts and circumstances, the intent is for USA water ski's liability insurance program to provide coverage. Now, there is a separate club insurance program that USA water ski has had in place for many years that is optional for clubs that have, you know, either twenty-four-seven um, exposure related to a body of water. Maybe they've got ski jumps and slalom courses and swim platforms and things of that nature that are installed out on a body of water on a twenty-four-seven basis. There is a separate club insurance program that's been designed to dovetail with the sanctioned event coverage to provide really that twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five uh, coverage that a club might need related to equipment and things of that nature.
Is the information related to that on the website, Nate?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, Mark Collins, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish up.
Um, because I've talked to several clubs that are having challenges with even renewing their membership. So that would be something that they would do at the same time, especially if they're involved in uh, three hundred and sixty-five day facilities agreement. Is that correct?
Yes, and there is a, if you go to that same insurance resources section, there is a link where all of the details, the, the easy to complete application form and pricing and all of that is available related to that club insurance program as well.
Mark, go ahead.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, this is Mark Cohen. I'm representing Metroplex Ski Club in Fort Worth. Um, thanks for doing this tonight. So when you're talking about these insurance, these insurances and sanctioned events and sanctioned practices. Um, so what the club has done historically over the last, I don't know how many years, um, and I didn't see it that way this year when I re-registered the club for its membership in December, was that it sanctioned every single day as a practice. And right now, what I saw was that you purchased the membership with sanctioning, but it didn't give you the option to sanction every day as a practice. So has that process changed? Or how, how would the club be covered on a daily basis uh, through the sanctioning um, portion that we purchased?
Yeah, I'll answer that one. So yes, it, it has changed, um, and we've hopefully changed it to make it easier. Uh, in the past, you had to literally go in and pick January first to June thirtieth and check the times and all that stuff. Basically, what we're saying now is, as long as you agree to the basic terms of the practice sanction, which means you're going to have a qualified driver there, you're not going to ski at three in the morning, you know, you're going to follow all the normal activities of a practice that your practice is covered. Um, simply by just, by, by doing that acknowledgement. Now, you still have to, if you're going to have guest members, um, you still have to have a safety involved. If you're going to do things outside of practice, um, you'd have to sanction, sanction those like you would a normal event. But what we try to do is eliminate the, the need for you to go into another website and simply put January to December and pick times and days and things like that because we, you're basically already accepting the acknowledgement that you're going to follow those things um, in the, in, on the front end. So you don't have to do any of that anymore. Um, again, as long as you follow what, what you need to follow in terms of having the qualified people there and things, then you're fine.
That's perfect. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
Nate Liman Hardy, one thing I did notice on that though was that all the waivers and everything have to be electronically submitted and they can't be done by paper. Is that correct?
If you're going to have guest members in your practice, we would like them to sign everything online, basically. They can do that um, in the new system. You can sign the waiver and, and sign up as a guest member and all that online. So basically, when you do sanction a practice, it will, or it should, give you a URL to share with those guest members, and that's the URL that they need to sign up prior to the event. In, in that signup portion, using that registration, they'll sign the electronic waiver. Uh, so we are trying to move off of paper waivers if at all possible and do the electronic waiver for guest members.
All right.
Uh, one of the questions I have for, for Randy that sort of came up in, in the course of this, these discussions was from clubs and sort of a misunderstanding that the liability has been shifted somehow away from USA water ski and onto the club. Um, and I know you've answered that in some of the emails I've shared with you, but obviously that's not true. What, what's happening is the club is actually benefiting from the insurance coverage that we have. There's no additional liability being shifted down to a, to a club, is there?
Yeah, no, that's not the intent. I mean, certainly when USA water ski sanctions or approves an event for a local organizing committee or a, or a member club, um, your liability insurance is provided automatically as part of that sanction or approval. And so because member clubs, local organizing committee, you know, the sport discipline and divisions, et cetera, are all named insureds under that program, should an accident occur, something occur where someone brings uh, a liability claim, whether it's a spectator, an athletic participant, uh, et cetera, in one of those events, the, your carrier would provide, you know, subject to policy terms and conditions, your carrier would provide defense and coverage, you know, with respect to that, that sort of claim.
Okay, I, let me get a clarification. When you refer to a guest member, what my, my concern is that I've got, let's say my brother-in-law that comes out and wants to ski with me. He's not an AWSA member. He signs a, a waiver obviously for our club, but he also would sign a waiver for AWSA. Would he then be allowed to participate in a practice? Same thing with somebody driving the boat? As long as we have a trained driver on site? Give me some, some definitions of those different entities, I guess is what I'm looking for.
So what you're describing, I think, is basically a practice, a sanctioned practice with a guest member.
Correct.
And what would happen, again, when you, when you sign your club up to purchase the, the practice sanctioning, um, you will get a URL that is generic to, or it's, it's, it's a URL, but it's tied to your club specifically. So you share that URL with any guest members that you're going to have throughout the year. That person would basically put in their information, sign up as a guest member, sign the electronic waiver, and then that's all they need to do. Uh, they're essentially a guest member for that day. Uh, there's also, we'll get into this a little bit in a second, talking about safe sport, but there, there, there is not a requirement for safe sport training for a guest member. Um, like someone's coming out for the day, someone that's going to be going to a learn-to-ski clinic, you know, for the weekend or a day, uh, the intention is not for those one-off people to, to have to do the training. But we would like them to go through the registration process um, using the URL you have so they, we can capture their data and we can also capture the electronic waiver.
Okay, and there's a couple reasons for that. Um, from the insurance carrier perspective, they want to make sure that everyone participating in a sanctioned or approved event or activity, including a sanctioned practice, has signed a waiver and release form, you know, for USA water ski. We also want, by them becoming a guest member, they then are covered under the participant accident policy that USA water ski provides to all of its members, including guest members. Um, and those are requirements for, from the liability carrier for the participant legal liability coverage to apply. And so it is very important that if a non-member is going to participate, that they become a guest member.
Uh, I don't really have a problem with that at all. I just was trying to make a, make sure that I understood the definition be, because the next question that comes into play is because that's associated with a particular club, does it create a release form for the club from that participant also? Or do they still have to do a separate release form?
Yeah, I mean, the, the USA water ski uh, waiver and release form is one that has been drafted and crafted based upon best practice language. Um, that, you know, has had input from the carrier, USA water ski's legal team and carrier through the years. Um, and clubs are included as release parties as part of that waiver form, along with a number of other uh, parties. And so, um, you know, I, I can't, from a legal perspective, can't, I'm not an attorney, I can't give you legal advice. But I would say that the USA water ski waiver form includes clubs as release parties um, as part of that form.
That actually simple, uh, simplifies some things for, for our club, so I'm glad to hear that. Uh, we've got a question from Todd Leach. Um, so Todd, you want to go ahead?
Yes, um, I understood the commentary that for one-off guests that uh, the safe support training is not intended for that scope. What about recurring guests? So I guess they're not one-off, they're just not yet committed to competition. We have several uh, situations where we conduct uh, clinics in the hopes of hooking someone into competition, getting them out of practice time where they feel like they are worthy of competition. And so there's a lot of recurrence of the same individuals, but they're not yet uh, at that competition level. When does safe sport become necessary for those individuals?
Well, what you described is probably someone that needs to be a grassroots member. The, the um, the purpose of the guest membership is, like you said, to give someone an opportunity to try it out. And if they're going to be trying it out for five or six times, then it wouldn't really constitute them as a guest anymore. They're really more a grassroots member, um, which would then be treated just like any other active member. So we're going to work through ways in the new system to sort of limit the number of guests appearances you can have in a, in a given year, and then it will make you become a, a grassroots member after so many times. Um, you know, obviously, we don't want someone just coming in as a guest member twenty different times. You know, they, they would need to uh, to basically upgrade to, to a grassroots type of member. But I would say if they're coming three or four times, um, it's fine, but then anything more than that, it would probably need to be upgraded to a grassroots, and that's something we're going to, again, work, work on in the new system to um, to have a trigger that, you know, will identify those people. Um, so they're not repeat guest members, I guess, but.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that already existed in, in as much as that the day pass, um, after, I want to say it was the seventh day pass, you were automatically converted to a grassroots account. And so it sounds like that mechanism already exists or something similar to that. Uh, would that not just continue?
Yeah, it will. I don't, I don't think it, I know it didn't in the old system do that automatically. It's something that we need to trigger in the new system to do that because when you do sign up as a guest member using that link, we, they, we do ask you for the date of which you're going to be participating. So it can track the number of times that someone has kind of come in, has come in. That, they would have to sign up as a guest member each time and sign the waiver. It's not like you just sign it once, like you do with your, your normal uh, membership waiver. But I will check into that to see um, kind of how it's set up. We don't have an awful lot of those, but um, we do need to come up with a system to where it, it does manual, or automatically upgrade you.
All right, thank you, Nate. And I guess this, this question will probably maybe be addressed in the next section is that once they do convert to that grassroots member, um, how much time do they have to complete the safe sport training requirement before they're prohibited from participating further?
Got it. Yeah, I'll get a little bit more into that. Right now, it's really thirty days. So like, most, everyone on this call is already a member and you've gone through the renewal process or will go through it here at some point in twenty twenty-two, so it will not apply to you. But anyone that's brand new off the street, if you're going to sign up as a USA water ski and weight sports member, you're going to go through the registration process and you're going to have essentially a thirty-day grace period to complete that safe sport training, um, where you can still participate and do everything you would as a, as a normal member. And then after that thirty-day period expires, is when um, there'll be a little bit more um, sort of penalty, I guess is the right word, but for, for not doing the training. So you will have that grace period, um, a guest member would, just like a, a normal member signing up for the first time. Any more questions for, for Randy or Kelly about insurance? And a lot of the stuff they talk about is, is a, a nice segue to, to the stuff I'm going to talk about around safe sport and background screens. Um, I guess one of the questions too, Randy, and it's good to hear from, from you and not necessarily from me, but it's come up a lot of times too, that um, the statement that, well, if we were just not part of the USOPC and we had, you know, no affiliation at all, we wouldn't have to do any of this stuff. Can you address that, that sort of question?
Yeah, so the federal safe sport legislation and the state laws that, that most states have passed apply not just to USOPC NGBs, not just to amateur sports associations, but in most cases to any youth-serving organization, whether it's an academic-serving organization, a boys' and girls' club, a boy scouts, a, a, an AAU, a whatever. Um, and so, no, just eliminating affiliation with the USOPC would not eliminate any sort of uh, federal or state law obligations that, that would otherwise apply.
Looks like Bob's got another question and then we'll go to Carl after that. So Bob?
Yeah, just uh, one last question. Uh, with regard to requirements for the insurance purposes, uh, what specifically has to be done? Is it the training? Obviously, you know, the, uh, the whole, the law was on reporting. And I know it's kind of grown legs since then, there's more to it. But what, beyond training, uh, are you looking for to ensure that, that things are not just sitting on a, a shelf somewhere?
Yeah, so, you know, the, the, the insurance carriers are requiring, obviously, compliance with federal and state laws are kind of like the bare bones minimum. But ultimately, they want to see comprehensive background screening being conducted, which is part of these laws anyway. They want to see uh, abuse and molestation, awareness and prevention training um, as part of it. And then they want to see those compliance and enforcement. And then they want to see those compliance and enforcement efforts. So what is the organization doing to make sure that down to the club and grassroots level, things like, you know, the training and the background screening and, you know, the, the, the reporting type things are in place, you know, throughout the organization?
Okay. And when you say background screening, who in particular?
Yeah, it depends on, you know, the, the state and the, you know, California may be slightly different than others, but, but certainly, most of the laws that I have seen is honestly, any adult that's going to be having involvement with minors is somebody that could be subject to the screening. And Nate may go, go into this in more detail in his section, but, but certainly coaches, officials and, and others who are going to have direct involvement with minors, you know, should be, should be going through the training and the screening.
Yeah, and I'll get into more of that in the background check section. We'll get in a little bit more of the weeds, but yeah, so table any other questions you have about specifics on background screens for a couple of minutes from now. So Carl, looks like you're up. Carl, did you have a question? And then I want to take yourself off mute.
Yeah, sure do. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. Right, so, so I think Bob hit on it a little bit, but I guess relating to the LOC coverage, I guess I'll call it coverage, and their compliance. We're trying to work through what, what compliance exactly means. And I guess the question is, to what extent is the coverage extended to the LOC for activities tied to, you know, letter of the law compliance, or at least the rules as stated by USA Water Ski?
Yeah, there's a, there, from an insurance carrier perspective, there is an expectation that, you know, the insured's going to comply with laws, applicable laws, and that sort of thing. But, you know, that's, that in and of itself, unless it was an intentional criminal act, it doesn't necessarily mean that the coverage would be precluded for an inadvertent, unintentional type situation. But yes, I mean, there is going to be an expectation that the LOC or the organizing club, you know, be following USA Water Ski's rules and regulations, whether it's getting signed waivers, requiring membership, following the, the sport rules and regulations, things of that nature. Those are all expectations. Unintentional failure, accident, you know, you know, unintentional failure to get a signed waiver, for example. You know, we've structured the program where it wouldn't preclude coverage as long as there's a system in place and we can show the carrier, look, this was being done, this is just something that slipped through the cracks in this situation. So we have designed the program to be as broad as possible when it comes to coverage. And to the extent that an event or an activity has been sanctioned or approved by USA Water Ski, the, the insurance program has been designed to be able to follow that scope of sanctioning, obviously subject to policy terms and conditions.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
So there was one question in the chat that says, does the federal law mandate Safe Sport training or background checks for each participant?
Yeah, Kelly, I don't know if we can flip back to the, the one slide which talked about the federal Safe Sport legislation. I think it was, I don't know, slide four or so.
There we go.
Yeah, so it did, the act did, does create a new standard of care for, and it wasn't just youth sports organizations. We now know it's broader than that. But yes, abuse training and prevention policies and procedures and mandatory reporting within 24 hours to law enforcement are all elements of that particular law. And keep in mind, you know, now, many, many, many states have also signed into law abuse or Safe Sport type legislation as well. And so it's not just the federal, it's the state as well, and California is the most recent example of that.
And I'm, I'm going to get into that a little bit here in, in a minute when we start talking about Safe Sport and, and who's required to do it and why they're required to do it. I mean, the law doesn't say that you have to do Safe Sport training. You know, the law says mandatory reporting in that if you have regular contact with a minor, that, you know, that requires abuse training and prevention for that particular person that has that regular contact. And that's the challenge that we face as an organization is, and it's very vague. And we've gone round and round with other NGBs trying to figure this out as well, because we're all in the same boat. You know, regular contact, you know, what does that mean? It, it could vary from sport to sport and from person to person. So the law is, is pretty vague in the sense that it does require mandatory reporting, that's the biggest part. But then the, the training part of it is tied to that regular contact. And again, we'll get a little bit more into the weeds on that one, but that's, that's the challenge we face, is trying to comply with that, trying to figure out who has regular contact with a minor when we're talking about Safe Sport training and USA Water Ski in, in particular. But we'll get into a little bit of the weeds of, of that one. The law doesn't say anything about background checks, but there is a, there is a requirement that we have to follow as a member of the USOPC, following their background check policy. And I'll get into that as well, and we'll, I'll share what that policy is, so you can see who needs to be background screened. But in terms of the law itself, no, it does not say, you know, you have to take Safe Sport training, or everybody, it doesn't say everybody has to. But I'll get into the weeds as to what, what the board felt was important for Water Ski here in a second.
And Nate, can I interject here? In reading the IWWF requirements, they've actually identified that training and background checks are required, but they put the burden of design and scope of that on the federation. So even if we look at alternatives, IWWF is still going to require something similar. May, it may not be quote, "safe sport," but it will be a training that's required. And that's, that actually goes along with a question that's on the chat of the, does the law say "safe sport" specifically? And maybe you can clarify the, the terms and definition of why "safe sport" was selected. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I mean, the, the law actually says Safe Sport Authorization Act in the name. So I'm assuming that they're referring to Safe, the Center for US, US Center for Safe Sport. But I'll let Randy answer this one. I'm, I'm guessing the, the insurance carriers are looking for something similar to some sort of training around sexual abuse and prevention, whether it be called Safe Sport or something else.
Yeah, and most, most NGBs do utilize the resources available for the US Center for Safe Sport. One, because it's, it's very low price or free. But there are other providers out there that can offer similar training, but, but typically there, it's not free. So I don't know that, you know, the US Centers training itself is the only source that could be utilized. But I would say most NGBs do because of the, the cost advantages.
Yeah, and I'll get into that when we start talking about the relationship with the USOPC, because they sort of are the, the educational group of choice amongst all the NGBs to provide not only the training, but also the exclusive jurisdiction to investigate sexual misconduct claims as well, which is a huge thing, because if, if that wasn't there, we as an organization would have to go and investigate each one of these claims independently on our own. And, you know, with a six-person staff, we're not armed with former FBI investigators and things like that, like the Center for Safe Sport is, to go out and actually do these investigations. So that's another huge part about the relationship with the Center for Safe Sport is not only the education and training part, but the, the investigative part as well.
Yeah, and if, if I may, you know, I, I think it would be important to point out that the board, when they're making these, these decisions, it's, it's a balancing act. And you, you heard from Randy about the need for us to be in a defensible position and have, be able to show in order to defend a claim that we've taken multiple steps to, to prevent, multiple prevention steps. Well, if we don't do it through Safe Sport, which is available to us for, you know, $6,000 a year, then what, what are the steps? I mean, what, you know, what other steps are there that, that we could take if we say, okay, we don't want anything to do with Safe Sport? You know, we're going to have to really source something else on our own that, that, again, is going to be more costly. You look at corporations that, that do this in-house with legal counsel that have invest, that have them in, independently investigate sexual harassment in the workplace claims. I will assure you, those do not get done for $6,000. So, but there's three things that the board really, you know, is looking at and balancing when they're looking at, at creating policy. One, of course, is this insurance relationship that we have and, and the, the obligations we have to our carrier to maintain and improve our positions from a liability standpoint. The other, of course, is the law. And then the third component is our USOPC compliance audit. So there's, there's three things that are all coming into play here that are, that are got, that are being balanced as factors in regards to any policies that are then passed.
I think Robert had a follow-up question. Go ahead, Robert.
I don't think I do.
Oh, unless your hand, your hand must still be up from before.
Okay.
Okay.
Nate, there's one more in, there's one more in chat. Keith, um, training comes in.
Oh, go ahead.
Training comes in many forms, awareness, education, mastery. Each has a different level of depth of knowledge transfer. Why is the same level of training expected of a coach of youth being asked as a general participant?
Like, well, I don't disagree with what you're saying. The challenge is, just like Doug said, you know, we're not in the business of creating educational content either. So if, if we were to create the content, maybe we would go a different route, but we're relying on the Center for Safe Sport to kind of create the content on behalf of all the NGBs and everyone else that they service. And they're the experts when it comes to the, the content creation and the delivery mechanism. They realize that there are some flaws in, in what they're, in what they've sort of created. It's not perfect for everybody. It's kind of a one-size-fits-all, which is going to make it challenging for some. So I envision that evolving over time. But right now, it's one core set of training, a core course, and then a refresher course after you take the core training.
Looks like Keith Lindemuller has a question. He's got his hand up.
Yeah, it's not necessarily a question as much as it is a comment, but back to that, what kind of training is required? Does it have to be Safe Sport? You know, one of the things I'd point out is that with USA Gymnastics, one of the primary risk issues that got them in the most trouble, as I understand it, is the fact that they did internalize all these investigations and it was far inadequate, far more inadequate than it needed to be in order to, to meet the intent of the law. And that's one, one of the things that got them in the most trouble, so. You know, that independence is pretty important.
Yeah, thanks, Keith. Anything else specific to Randy or Kelly on the insurance side? Again, I wanted everyone to sort of understand the insurance element, because like Doug said, it, it's one of the the pillars that sort of drove some of the decisions on behalf of the board. So having folks understand the challenges that we face from an insurance standpoint, you know, from, from the liability factors that are out there and the amount of risk the organization was willing to take is important to, to sort of understand how we got to where we are. Epic did a great job and Randy and his team did a great job of bringing us some options that we are in a much better spot insurance-wise now than we've ever been as an organization in terms of coverages. Unfortunately, we have to pay the price for some of that. It's going to be about a 26% increase in our premium over, over last year. But in order to get the, the proper coverages in place in order to protect the members and the clubs and the organization as a whole, those are the steps that we needed to take. So again, it is a big driver in a lot of these decisions, but it would be irresponsible of myself or the board to put the organization in a position where we were vulnerable to, to something. And if something were to happen, you know, even, even in the coverages we have in place now, which are pretty good, you know, one claim could still send the whole house of cards down in, in terms of, if, if it was found that the organization was negligent in not protecting our young athletes and, you know, not providing as many preventive measures as possible, then it could be a, a bad day. But we're trying to do everything we can to avoid that, and that's, that's kind of where we are today. So I'll let Kelly and Randy drop off if you guys want. You want to, want to stick around if you want. If you've got nothing better to do on a Monday night. But you're free to go at this point. Again, thanks for joining us and I appreciate all you guys have done for us to date.
Thanks, Nate. We appreciate it. We'll see you guys later.
Thanks for having us.
Bye-bye.
So if you want to cancel your screen when you drop off, I'll pick it back up. There we go. All right, bear with me here while I try to get my screen back on. Okay, you guys should see my screen now, which is on the Safe Sport slide. So, and again, Bob and Doug, feel free to jump in here at, at sort of any point and provide some color commentary to, to my play-by-play here. But Randy and Kelly talked about the federal law, and obviously, we know the law does talk about mandatory reporting and, and prevention training for adult members that have regular contact. And again, it doesn't require that every single person have to do it. This was a board decision that we felt was important. And the, the bullets below that sort of get into the why of, of how this all kind of came about. If you look at our organization as a whole, we have about 13,700 members. Forty percent of those sort of fall within show ski, and, and show ski sort of as a sport is built to have regular contact with adults and minors, because you, you have adults and minors on the same team. So it's a challenge when we start talking about show skiing to not have regular contact with a minor. So that, that's 40% of our membership. Now you factor in coaches, instructors, officials, our national team members and, and all those kind of folks. They also are deemed to have regular contact with minors and those are another 15%. So now we're at 55% of the whole membership is deemed to have regular contact. And it really becomes challenging for us to try to figure out from a quality control, control standpoint that well, Dale needs it, but Jim doesn't, and Doug needs it, but Tommy doesn't. It, it's just really hard to figure out who has regular contact and who doesn't. So with all of that being said, the board felt not only was it the right thing to do in order to help protect the organization and protect minor athletes, to simply require all of our adult members to have right, all of our adult members, regardless of regular contact, to, to go through the Safe Sport training. And again, here, the goal is to, to help people recognize and hopefully eliminate areas where potential abuse and misconduct could occur. We're not out here trying to make a witch hunt to identify, you know, this person or that person. It's really to help everyone understand kind of what to look for to so help prevent these things in the future. Again, we have 13,700. Again, we have 13,700 members, 3,400 of those are minors. So one-fourth of our membership is made up of minors already. To date, we've had about 2,000 members take the training of the 10,000 or so adults that we have in the, in the fold. So it's right about 20% so far. And those numbers have ticked up pretty quickly here in the last couple of weeks since the January 1st sort of deadline kind of came and passed. It's also good to note, I think, too, that this is not just a water ski thing. Other NGBs are in the same boat we are and they're following a similar path. There's 50 NGBs and right now 15 of them, including us, are requiring this adult training element, including one that's very similar to ours in the US Ski and Snowboard. So it's a sister organization. Essentially, it's very similar. They have 18,000 adult members. They're also requiring the training too. So not to say that, you know, we're doing it just because everybody else is doing it. We're doing it because we felt it was important. But we're not on a limb here. You know, we're not the only one that's, that's requiring this. And then just to kind of recap what the training entails, you know, it, sometimes you would think that this, the ask is someone's firstborn child. You know, it's really 90 minutes every four years. The core course takes 90 minutes and then each year in between, it's about 20 minutes to do a refresher. So again, no one wants to do it. I mean, it's not like I'm excited to go have to do this. But at the same time, it is, it is the right thing to do, the board felt. And it's not overly crazy of an ask to, to do it as well. It's free. There is no charge. And that's kind of it with SafeSport. I mean, we, there are some conversations that are going to be happening at the board meeting coming up here in two weeks that will discuss some minor exceptions potentially to this. Again, it all involves around, at this point, competition. So that's, that's the only way we can sort of quality control to determine if people are doing the training or not, is to have it tied to, to competition. And, and just for some other additional background, we do get audited by SafeSport every year. We're getting ready to go through an administrative audit right now where they look at all of our policies. They look at, I have to provide them with a list of everyone that has regular contact with a minor. And they're going to go through that list and they're going to handpick some people to see if they've been trained or not. You know, it's not like we just have to do this and it just goes away. They, they are audited every year to ensure that these, the policies, not only are the policies, but like Randy said, but the insurance carriers look for as well, that we're actually implementing these things and not just putting it on paper, but actually doing it. So, again, I'm sure we can go round and round on SafeSport. I'm happy to try to answer any questions that, that people may have. At this point, I don't know, Bob or Doug, do you guys want to provide any other color? I mean, you guys were in, in the meeting as well.
Hey Nate, can you, can you put your screen to presentation mode, please?
Yeah, I'll try. Last time I did that, I messed up my, uh, yeah, I'll go ahead and do it.
Thank you.
I just can't see the chat or anything else.
I'll catch the chat. I'll catch the chat and watch for hands for you.
Okay. I don't know, Bob or Doug, do you guys want to add any, any color to this that I may have missed anything? I mean, I'm speaking on behalf of the board and that's you guys. So I'd rather you, you speak for yourself since you guys are on the board as president and chairman. And again, feel free to provide color for anything I may have missed as to how the board got to where they got.
Sorry, Nate. Bob Arshambo here. You know, we are getting some comments in the background. We've got to remember that this organization is run by committees and by boards. And we try to communicate as much information upfront as absolutely possible. We realize that one of our biggest criticisms sometimes is communication. And it's not the fact that we're hiding anything. It's just that we haven't found that magical email or that magical note in which to roll everything out. And, you know, it, it would be great to be able to have these town hall meetings before we run into anything of this size or, or complexity. But at the same time, we, we can't always do that. We have to move forward and quickly. Maybe having more of these town halls would be, you know, very helpful. But getting back to SafeSport, you know, we're trying to touch as many people as possible. It's an awareness program and anyone can benefit from awareness. It's free. It's not for everybody. Adults don't like to be told what to do. And, and I tell you that the people I've talked to one-on-one, they, they panic a little bit when they say they have to go through training and take a few tests or whatever. But if you talk to anyone typically 40 years old or younger, 35 and younger with kids in school and going through this, they've been through it for four years now and we're just trying to catch up. So I'm trying to hit, highlight some of the comments that are, that are out there and and, and try to answer them all in a very general manner.
So there was a, there was a comment here on the meeting chat. And, and, and if I read it correctly, it's about, it's about members that renew when it's time to ski in an event. So if they renew their membership annually at your event, once they renew, they have 30 days to complete the SafeSport training. So there is, there is, you know, a time allowance built into this. Nate, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, that, I may want to correct you a little bit because that's a little bit inaccurate. In terms of renewals, no. Brand new members, yes. Like if you're a current member, you know now, you know, you've known since March of last year that this was happening on January 1st. So a renewing member can go in and take the training at any point. So you've had eight months of grace period, unfortunately. And I mean, I haven't seen the chat, but I, I will, I mean, I know there's been at least three emails about SafeSport training. It's been in every issue of the, of the Water Skier Magazine. It's been in nearly every monthly e-newsletter that goes out to, to everybody as well. So it hasn't been like this is the first time that someone's going to hear about it. Or it shouldn't be anyway, because there has been things in place to communicate this. We probably could have done a little bit better job, but again, to defend our communications team here, it's, it's not like we didn't do anything. But what you're saying is somewhat accurate, but not for a renewing person. If it's a brand new person that's just coming in for the first time, then yes, they have that 30-day grace period. For someone that's renewing, again, they can go in and take this at any time. And the other thing too, again, it can be done in stages. I mean, you can do it for 10 minutes a day and be done in two weeks if you want. And you don't have to do it all at one time. Now, people will wait to the last minute until it gets right up in time, until their, their first event is on Saturday and they realize that on Friday they haven't done it. But what, what we're doing is especially on the AWSA, AWSA side, at least from the competition element of it. The OLR system will not let you register for your tournament if it reads you as not a current member. And by current, meaning you paid your dues, you've signed your waiver and you've taken the SafeSport training. If you're in any other status other than any of, of, any other status than current, it's not going to let you proceed through the OLR system to register. So AWSA folks in particular should, will know right away if they're trying to register for a tournament three months from now, it's not going to let you do it and until you take the training. So that may have answered the question. Again, it's, the intent of the grace period was exactly what you said. When we get someone coming in, coming in, they do have some time to kind of get this taken care of. But again, a renewing member, unfortunately, you know, you've known about this for eight months. So you've had that much grace period.
Okay, Nate, you've got a couple of other questions on the chat here. First one is, this is all well and good, but when the skier shows up after traveling or even if I email each of them and tell them about SafeSport requirements and they don't, I lose skiers and the organization loses members, then all of the insurance issues are moot. It's not much of a, it's not really a question. It's more of a statement, but I wanted to make sure you got it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand. I mean, we're not naive to the fact that this could be a small pain point. And during the course of our background on, on implementing this, you know, I did speak to each one of the 15 other NGBs and I'm happy to, I'm happy to provide the membership with the notes that I've gotten from them in terms of, you know, the number one question the board wanted me to find out was, how does this affect membership? The membership drop? And the overall question, answer to that question was no. I mean, were there's people that complained about it? Yes. Did they complain and complain and complain right up until the day before they had their competition and then they did it? And then fast forward a year or two after the implementation and it's second nature, no one says a word. So yeah, again, like I said before, does someone want to voluntarily say, yeah, I want to do this? I can't wait to take the training? No. But at the same time, you know, I, I don't feel it's going to be a deal breaker for, for a skier. I mean, it's going to sound bad, but if you want to ski, you're going to do it. I mean, that, that, that's, that's the thing. I mean, yeah. It, again, it's, it's, we're trying to make it as less burdensome as possible. We're trying to, to make it to where we never have to turn anybody away. You know, you're not going to, if someone shows up at your ski event and wants to ski, you know, you're not going to say, no, you can't do it because you don't have SafeSport training. But at the same time, if they're going through AWSA anyway, through the, through the online registration, it wouldn't be able to get to that point. And we're going to have to do the same on show ski and some of the other ones that, that have sort of a manual process for registration. The registrar is going to have to look at the status of, of their membership and realize that they're not a current member and encourage that person to take the training.
Okay, we've got three more on the chat here and then we've got a couple of hands raised. The first one is, we should, we should have blank slated the whole SafeSport subject and approached it from a, how would we have met the needs if we were on our own to do so perspective? That involves define the problem statements, make a list of all events and/or typical site facilities, define what needs to happen for each context to ensure safely, then work to evaluate that list in context of SafeSport. It is my firmly held belief that we could make a more significant impact upon actual safety doing this ourselves than this liability quote, unquote checkbox solution promoted by SafeSport and our insurance representatives. We owe it to our youth and our, and our vulnerable adults to spend time to ask, what is the right way in quotes to protect them in our competition events? We are just reacting to this in an urgent way, but just accepting the first solution presented to us. This means it is not aligned to our situation, nor is it likely to achieve its objective.
Well, I appreciate the comment. I didn't really see a question in there.
Nate, I think I can help a little bit on this one is that SafeSport wasn't the first thing that was brought to the board to take and look at. There were several alternatives that were put out there. And then the, the second component to it would be that the risk of doing it on your own is you need the legal counsel and the trained people to take and, and be able to do the evaluations and track stuff down. So I'm, I'm not as granular into it as you are, but that's where my feedback would be.
And, and actually, you know, it's a good question. And the, the number one thing is that we were kind of drinking through a fire hose as this thing started. And it, we had at least a starting block. We had the, a group that could deliver consistent training, which is more important. And now that we're going through these audits and seeing certain things, there is a way to possibly fine-tune it better for USA Water Ski or any of the nine sports disciplines. As we've looked at it and we take it through risk management, we've done a lot to try to take a look at the, you know, what is real out there and what is not real. And it is something that will be an ongoing process of fine-tuning. Could have we done it right at the very beginning? It would have taken us five years to probably even begin to get this thing off the ground. And we just didn't have that kind of time. Now that we are involved in it and we're, we're basically jumped in, we're going to be able to at least take a look at what we're doing and, and come down with the finer reports. So Fran's done a good job on a toolkit that, that we're trying to do. And I promise you that we spend, a, a good group of us spend a few hours every night going through ideas, thoughts, you know, kind of batting things back and forth to improve these situations. So this is not to where we just gave a blind nod to it and said, hey, you know, good luck, everybody, you know, you know, let's go that route. We're trying every which way to get through it. Nate, I know has gone to USOPC and several groups to go back and, and, and say, no, we're going to challenge this. We're going to do this. And other NGBs are doing exactly the same thing. And I, I just want you to know that, you know, yeah, we have to fine tune it, but the more we tried, I've tried to fine tune some of these things. I find that if you look at the very raw basics, even our nine sports disciplines are not that different. Different application, but just not that different when it comes to SafeSport training and, and ensuring, you know, trying to ensure protection for our minors and, and our skiers in general.
So that leads into the next question for you, Nate. The person says, I would recommend specifically identifying those who need SafeSport training, show ski, et cetera.
Well, we are, but it's still, it's still a challenge because again, it all comes back to identifying what regular contact means. So show ski, we have a pretty good idea because you're on a adult, on a team with a minor and get it, that's regular contact. But then just using AWSA or Barefoot, for instance, if you're in a Barefoot club and you're, you have minors and adults in the club, does that constitute regular contact? You're out skiing with them, practicing with them? I don't know. Same thing with AWSA. If you're in a three-event club and you have adults and members in the club, you go to an AWSA tournament and there's juniors running around all over the place. Again, it's difficult to, to determine what regular contact means. And from a, from a quality control standpoint, it's very, it's difficult for us to manage and police. Not to say it can't be done and we're, we're trying to work through ways to, to eliminate some of the burden and to, to drill down a little bit deeper into it. But again, it's, you know, it's something the board felt was important, you know, for the safety of all of our athletes.
And they're, and Nate and his team have put together a SafeSport compliance chart. So if you look through the documentation, look for SafeSport compliance chart and it does give very specific detail, who, what, where. It's going to be a, a, a chart in progress, if you will, but it's a good start on who needs it, who doesn't, especially with some of the most recent changes.
Yeah. And then I would encourage everybody to look at that FAQ that's on there as well. I mean, it is a ton of questions, both that FAQ was basically built off of every question I've gotten from an email, from a message board, from ball spray, from show skier forum, wherever you go to, to talk about water skiing and posted something about SafeSport, I've captured that question. We have the answer to, to, to it. So I'd encourage you to go there and, and check that out for sure.
Nate, there's, there's one more here. We're, we have two quick ones here. One is a person whose SafeSport expired and they did not get a notification. They, they think it would be nice to receive a notification when it's time for them to re-up.
Agreed. I, and, and again, not, not you guys' problem, my problem to deal with. But, you know, there's a lot of IT challenges that, that we as an organization are going through. This membership database system is one big change that's hopefully going to bring. Uh, this membership database system is one big change that's hopefully going to bring us a little closer to the 21st century than where we were before. Um, so we'll be able to implement a number of these different things that you're referring. Um, and again, we have three or four different programs that all do different things. So, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to consolidate and, and make our I T better. And in, in the process, it should trigger some of these, at least the goal anyway, down the road is to trigger some of these reminder emails that if your safe sport training is coming due, that it lets you know. Uh, again, one of the biggest challenges we face is your membership date and your safe sport date are not synonymous. Like your membership date is whenever it is you signed up or renewed and your safe sport date is whenever you took the first course. So those, those dates are different. So again, that's another challenge that your, your dates are off. So, um, you know, I guess what we're trying to encourage is if we can get everyone on us, on the calendar year for safe sport at least, if you haven't done it yet and people do it now in January, then they should know every January, it's time to do the safe sport refresher again. At least that's where the cadence, we're trying to get people on, especially now. That's why we decided to launch it in January. Uh, so the 80% of the membership that still needs to do it, hopefully they can all do it in January and February and beginning of the year before the ski season starts. And then they know every year, just to knock out the refresher come the first of the year. But it's a good point and it's noted.
Okay. So the, the last one on chat here that I have, I'm going to hold off because I saw something come in that's going to take and tie to it, I believe. So the first person with their hand up is May.
Yeah, well, uh, Meg and I are here. This is John Davis. Uh, I was on the national insurance task force. So we discussed all this in December before Christmas. And I think you answered one of my questions and that is uh, a renewal, someone who is trying to renew their annual membership at the tournament, the Friday before the events start the next day. If they try to do that, they can't ski because they won't come up as an active member having not taken safe sport. Is that correct?
No, my guess is they're not going to be using the online registration for this, right? They're going to be
Correct.
This, the situation you described is someone that's just going to be, so non O L R. Yeah. Okay. So what they're going to show up in the system is if, if the registrar for that tournament, whoever it is, when they look that person up or even that person's going to show is, and we're working on tweaking some of the terminology now, like right now, if, if you haven't taken a training, your status says deactivated. That's going to change here in the very near future. It's going to say pending safe sport. So that's what you'll see. It'll say pending safe sport. Now, again, likely not going to turn anybody away, but at the same time, you know, we're going to rely on those LOCs to sort of police what we can't because the only way I can police it is through the O L R system by not letting them register. If they, if you're not using the O L R system, then it really is up to the LOC to sort of enforce this, that they have, they, you know, they have to come and take the training.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay. So, so Nate, let me throw a question associated with that. If a club allows people to ski because they're doing paper registration that are not safe sport trained or don't meet the criteria, what's the ramifications to that club?
Well, I don't allow them to ski if they're registered, if their membership's not current. But I have, for example, last summer, I had people registering through their phone the day of the tournament, trying to get in.
Yeah. I mean, this is, this is going to be a, a culture change.
Yeah, it will.
Good. Like it's, we, we need to, to try to get people out of the, the behavior of just doing something day of. Even if you're going to register for the tournament or join as a member, um, that's not going to happen overnight, but it could be a, a culture change for the, the better to get them.
I have to say, yeah, I have to say the majority of people are prepared when they register for the tournament. They will contact me ahead of time. Um, and there were several people last year that, you know, I said, hey, your membership's going to expire one day before the tournament. You need to, to renew your membership and then you can ski, you know? So I, I do actively communicate with the skiers. It's just when you have that person walk on the site that needs to renew, it's, they're not going to be able to ski.
Well, we're going to, you know, my wife and I, Nate are going to send out a blanket email to all the skiers that have historically come to our tournaments and remind them of this. And then we're going to send out a reminder in May to, you know, and, and basically say, you've got to get this done. We don't want any difficulty, uh, the day before the tournament for their benefit, you know, something like that. Uh, the, the other question I had was with regard to, uh, background checks. Uh, am I correct in assuming that everyone now at an LOC tournament, whether it be the score, whether it be the chief judge, whether it be an assistant judge, whether it be the drivers, whether it be somebody who works on the starting dock who is a membership, member of A W S A, they all have, are you saying they all have to have the background clearances?
No, not necessarily. And I'm going to get into that in my, my next slide here. Um, so it's a good segue. So I can go ahead and talk about that.
Okay. So, and, and could I, one final question? Uh, there are a, a bunch of specific things that I can anticipate are going to happen. Um, sometimes we use a junior as a boat judge trying to, they're, they're qualified, but try to encourage them to become uh, judges, uh, and they're in the boat with a senior driver who's an adult. Sometimes a, a junior will walk up into the judges tower when only my wife and adult was up there scoring. And then two years ago, we had a, uh, a family show up for the tournament who's, who's supported our tournaments for years, but the boy is a senior in high school. He shows up with his girlfriend and they have a tent down at the end of the lake with a hammock. I mean, you know, and they're going to stay overnight. And I don't know, I, to be quite honest, I don't know if one of them was 18 or 17. So I'm just anticipating if there's a number of issues that we're going to logistically get into here that I'm not quite sure how we're going to handle.
Yeah. I mean, there's a million and one what ifs and this and that. I mean, these policies are, were put in place for all national governing bodies and sport organizations to follow. So it is sort of a one size fits all and it's not, doesn't necessarily always fit perfect. So there will be a million and one scenarios that you just described. Um, one of the things that I wanted to mention before we get into the background screen on the safe sport thing is that, um, within the new membership system, which is a good thing, it does have an instant connectivity to the safe sport database to where if you take the training, you know, and during the testing process, I did this myself because I was due for the refresher uh, myself. So I, my membership status on the, uh, on the membership system set out was deactivated because I hadn't taken the safe sport training. And then I went and did this, the refresher course. As soon as I hit submit, I went back to the, my membership dashboard and refreshed the screen and it automatically updated my safe sport status and my membership to current. So literally, and I've had conversations with, like I said, with, with other NGBs when I was having this discussion and speed skating was telling me, you know, they had instances where you would have people in the parking lot, literally on their iPad or on their phone, taking the training and then hitting submit and then they're ready to go. So we want to avoid those situations, obviously, but, um, with the technology we have, as soon as you complete it, and again, it can be done on your phone, your iPad, you don't even need a Wi-Fi connection. You can take it anywhere. Uh, once you take it and hit submit, your membership status will be instantly updated within the system, which is a good thing. So with that.
Well, I was just going to say Nate, before we move on from the safe sport requirements, um, just a quick, um, again, comment, uh, as chairman of the board on where the board's, you know, discussions and kind of sentiment was on this. I saw a comment in the chat about this being a, a convenience. Um, and that not everyone on site requires training. Well, that's true. That's true. And actually, most people uh, don't require training, but awareness certainly doesn't hurt in trying to uh, minimize or eliminate any risk of something of that nature happening at any of our events. So, um, that was kind of where the discussions went on the board. Um, so, you know, again, it goes back to doing bare minimum versus what we could do to really cover, uh, cover our bases. And also I did see it, a question on who is required. Well, at this point for 2022, the board approved in March, um, that it saves the safe sport program be required for every adult member age 18 and over. Now, there is a compromise, um, um, after all the feedback from, from members on this, there is a compromise that has gone to the risk management committee and is, it will come back to the board. Um, and it, it, our board meeting at the end of the month here. And the, that would make it a requirement for anyone who competes in sanctioned events. Any adult member age 18 and over that competes in sanctioned events would be required to do the training. Um, so that's the compromise on the safe sport. And I think Nate has it queued up to go into the background checks next. And we can, uh, we can address that then.
Doug, I want to add one thing to that. It's who competes or participates, meaning officials, you know, that type of, uh, that type of group that may not compete, but they are an active, uh, participant of a sanctioned event.
Real quick question is coming from some of the professionals that go through background checks and through.
Oh, hold on guys. Hold, hold, hold on. We had two other people that had their hands raised that were before the people that you're going to on the chat. So just bear with us for a second. Carl Addington, can you talk please?
Yeah, I'll defer. Um, I want to see the background check stuff and it's getting late. I got a question on the online registration and what it's going to, uh, what, what requirements it's going to meet for the LOC, but I think the background check might be more important at this point.
Okay. Robert Howerton?
Yeah. The, the question that's coming into play from teachers especially is they have to do basically a safe sport training every year. They also have to do background checks every year. Is there any process that's being considered where that information can be submitted from other organizations that are approved?
Safe sport, yes. If you've taken a safe sport from another entity, which is likely going to be another N G B or sports related group, uh, that is reciprocal. We are working with safe sport now. There is some challenges and getting, getting back to my database stuff before and some of our I T challenges. Um, to make matters worse, I guess safe sport went through their own database um, change like three months ago, and there's been some, some data issues there with some of the data not migrating over to their new system or migrating inaccurately. And then our system is reading that data. So I know some members have had, you know, they're basically said, I've taken the training, I've got my certificate, but my thing still says incomplete. And then we go to the safe sport database and it says incomplete over there as well because the data didn't move properly. So there's a lot of different balls in the air here. But long answer short is if you've taken the training through another sport, safe sport, it is reciprocal with, with us. So it may take us a minute or two to figure it out. If you've taken it from hockey, we need to make sure that you're in the, the safe sport database as both hockey and water ski, and then it'll read correctly. But that yes, um, and background screens I'll get into, but the short answer is no. Because, um, there are many different background screens you can do out there. There's ones that you can do for $2. There's ones you can do for $200. They check for a bunch of different things. So it's really difficult to determine the type of background screen someone had, if it's checking for the same things that's required of the USOPC and which, and I'll get into that in a second, but that's, uh, that's the biggest thing on the background screen is, is making sure that the screen is, is checking for what is required by the USOPC and their policy.
Yeah. And then as Nate said, that, that's a process of trying to be automated. Um, so that it happens automatically and it knows that if you took it through USA soccer, for instance, that you're, you're good to go for water ski when you renew your membership. However, um, if that, as he said, these technical challenges aren't met, you still can log into your safe sport, um, uh, account there on the safe sport program, you can download your certificate or print it and email it, scan it and email to, um, or fax, uh, to headquarters and get that, uh, requirement met. So, um, the very last thing you do, uh, last screen on the safe sport program training is of course the completion certificate. So, uh, again, that's, and, and the refreshers have the same thing. It's the very last screen of the refreshers. So you can, you can just print or email that, download it to headquarters.
Okay. The next one for you Nate on chat is safe work, safe sport. Terms and conditions are arbitration only. Remember legal protections per Nate's number six in seven claims result in no action. If an innocent member or official is associated in some investigation that give up their right to legal representation, uh, C R and many other consumer rights groups are very much against arbitration.
All right. I, I probably need to see that one in the, in the, in the chat to give you an accurate answer, but gathering is, well, I'm not sure I'm gathering anything on that one. You have to read it again. Is it, is it a question about if someone accuses you of doing something?
Or. Basically, the context is, is that, is that, uh, safe sport, you give up, um, all rights to a legal process and you're held to arbitration only. And that groups are very, that there's, um, consumer rights groups are against arbitration. So it's really a question of is why did we go to arbitration versus a legal process? They felt it should have stayed as a legal process.
Well, I don't have a great answer for you on that one. I think basically what, at the end of the day, if someone is doing something illegal, when you report something through safe sport and it's illegal, they're going to report it to the authorities. So it is going to go through the legal process. We're talking about, um, you know, someone that may not have done technically something illegal. Like for instance, a violation of the safe sport code, if you read this, if you look at the safe sport handbook, you know, someone that is text messaging with a minor, an adult person who's text messaging with a minor or comment or communicating with that minor over social media or whatever it may be, that would be a violation of the safe sport code. It's not necessarily illegal. So there's no legal ramifications there, but it would go through the investigative process through the center for safe sport. They would investigate things and then they would come up with a determination and a, since they have jurisdiction and any sanction that they would impose on that particular member. And if that particular member was sanctioned, for instance, for six months, um, that member could then appeal and it could go to arbitration. So I guess that's kind of the process there. It's not, it's not circumventing the legal process. It's just for matters that are not illegal is, is what, uh, safe sport's going to investigate. And then there's arbitration after that if, uh, if the accused doesn't like the sanction.
Nate, it's John Brusica. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I, I mean, I, I know it's late, but you know, uh, this, I think this is an important point and I'm the one who made the, uh, made the chat. So can I, can I jump in?
Sure.
So when I say C R in my chat, that's consumer reports. And when you sign on to take the test, in the terms and conditions, it says, quote, if you live in the United States or Canada, by agreeing to the following terms of use, you agree to resolve disputes with safe sport through binding arbitration with very limited exceptions and not in court. And you waive certain rights to participate in certain actions as detailed in dispute resolution section of the agreement. Now, let me say upfront that, you know, one of my most significant concerns is the liability should someone make an inappropriate comment uh, in my presence and I failed to report it, or one of those million, one in a million scenarios where a um, innocent person gets associated with one of these investigations. In fact, if it's based upon your, um, numbers, you came out with, uh, I think you said 7,000 cases, another in your, in your Y email, 8,400 total cases. Of those 1,500 res, uh, resulted in temporary or permanent um, restrictions. So there was about seven that, you know, a lot of them that were bogus or did not rise. Maybe it was a poor joke and somebody took offense. I don't know. One of the, you know, one of those millions, but um, anyone that gets involved in one of these suits or what, you know, it shouldn't call it a suit, one of these investigations, you have no, um, legal representation. I mean, uh, and consumer rep, in fact, I mean, uh, and Consumer Report, in fact, um, the Congress just last year approved a bill that's going to the Senate to outlaw, uh, arbitration, forced arbitration. So, um, Consumer Reports and other consumer advocates are adamantly against arbitration. It strips out all of your legal protections in the court system. And for that reason, I won't be taking the testing.
Okay. I mean, I've got, I'm not a lawyer and I don't want to pretend like I am one. So, uh, I'm really not equipped to, to comment on that. You know, just after pulling is from, from SafeSport, I didn't write that. We didn't write it. It's coming from them. So.
Could we use another organization other than SafeSport then? If I understand correctly, because we're affiliated with the Olympics, we can't. Because it's a requirement, SafeSport is a requirement if you're affiliated with the Olympic Committee.
That's correct. So if, if, if like we talked about before, to, to, to check the insurance box, I guess, we could create our own, you know, educational materials, but we're not equipped to do that. We have no educational experts to, to build courses and, you know, do those types of things. So, um, are there other options out there? Probably. I'm not familiar with them. You know, we are, we are using SafeSport because not only for the training element, but also for the investigative element too, like I mentioned before. So.
All right. Well, thanks. Thanks for the time. I sent you, uh, you know, a long, uh, background on this. And I welcome the opportunity to have a follow-up discussion with you.
Okay.
So did you say your name was Mark?
No, John Resica.
I'm sorry, John. Um, John, what, what you were reading from the, uh, from this, the SafeSport screen? Or you were reading from the USA Water Ski Policy?
Terms and conditions. I went to take the test and it's prominently displayed at the beginning of the terms and conditions. Uh, when you go to take the test.
And that was the test for the, uh, for the SafeSport training?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. We've noted that we'll, we'll follow up on this.
Thank you.
Thanks Doug. Um, so the next question is who is required to complete the SafeSport training and background screening? And they inserted the link to the, uh, SafeSport training requirements. And if that person would, would take in, if you want to talk, go ahead. Cause it shows in color on my screen. So if it's highlighted in yellow, you have to take SafeSport. If it's highlighted in green, you need the background check and SafeSport. And if it's highlighted in blue, um, in light blue over the, over the grid, then you need an MVR screening.
And. This is Brad Saturday. I totally understand it. I was just, I was giving, I was passing out the resource to other people. I believe there is questions coming up on who was required, SafeSport and background screenings. And so I was just doing it informational.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry. I missed the follow-up on that because there was something I see Bob was responding to. Thanks. Um, there was a comment from someone. I don't think there's anything to answer, but a skier can register as a new competitor, become a member and compete in multiple events within the first 30 days. It seems like they should be allowed to ski only one event before having to register. Excuse me. I used the word register. I meant complete SafeSport.
Yeah, I mean, noted. We'll go back and look at the chat afterwards as well. I mean, I would obviously use this time to answer any questions and not necessarily respond to comments. Um, but.
That's right.
The comments are noted. You know, if you want to put comments in the chat, feel free. If we don't address them, you know, we are keeping them so we can, uh, reference them at a later date though.
Uh, Dale, where did you see that comment? Because I am cutting and pasting all of these, uh, chats so we make sure we don't miss anything.
Yeah, I got a couple on text.
Oh, okay. If you could forward that, I'd appreciate it.
They're, they're going to be all put into an email with all of them in, in chronological order. So all good. Um, you answered, no practice does not count. So the next one is according, one second, I need to read this one. They're getting, you're getting faster than what I was. I'll come back to that one. Um, yeah, this is a different. So somebody put in here, this is a different type of arbitration though. It is not legal arbitration. It's an internal investigation of arbitration. And that was referring to the discussion that we just completed. Um, this last one I'm going to read you. I didn't get a chance to read it Nate. FYI, according to the, FYI, according to the chart on those, uh, requiring different checks, it appears several officials will need background checks. A safety director and/or instructor is not included, question mark. According to Nate's slide, my interpretation is, is that the position would require a background check as part of the quote unquote officials group, i.e. having regular contact with athletes. Can you please explain why safety personnel is not included in the background check requirements?
Yeah, let me, I'll get into background checks now as it's a good segue. Um, so what you have on the screen right here, you know, as I said, as a member of the USOPC, um, we do follow their background check policy is sort of a blanket policy that covers all national governing bodies. So not just water skiing. And, um, you see here kind of what the criteria is for who needs to get a background check. And again, some of this is, is up for interpretation. Um, the main part is someone that serves in a position of authority over or have regular contact with athletes. That doesn't necessarily even say minor athletes. It just says athletes. Um, including but not limited to staff, officials, coaches, board members, coordinators, local directors, independent contractors, yada, yada, yada. So when we got this here, their term for officials is pretty generic. They're, what they're referring to here is basically like sport officials. So like a referee. Um, again, this policy is, is encompassing every sport from water ski to football to gymnastics to taekwondo to equestrian. Like everyone calls it something else. So in our case, um, when we first got this policy, I questioned them on asking, well, our officials mean a lot of things. Like we have drivers and scorers and, and scribes and this person and that person. And they, we just dump everybody into officials. So I shared with them that and they kind of looked at it. And basically they came back and said, the only official that we have in our sort of terminology that needs to be background skiing is a judge. All the other ones, according to this policy and according to the USOPC, doesn't necessarily fall under the criteria. So we went with judges to start off. And then when we talked to them about, well, we have all kinds of judges. We've got assistant judges, regular judges, senior judges, paying them judges. Well, you know, initially it was all judges. And we sort of fought on that. I appealed it, talked to their compliance board. They denied my appeal and said, all judges across the board, no matter what. Then fast forward a couple of months later, I was talking to my counterpart at speed skating and was referencing, you know, the challenge that we faced here coming up with a lot of our judges having to get background screened. And he was like, well, our judges, what we do is only background screen the appointed judges for national and international events. And then I went back and we looked at the policy again and we talked to the USOPC and they've agreed that the only judges that are required to have a background screen to be compliant with this policy are those of who we appoint to be national championship level judges or above. And that proposal is, went through our risk management committee and is going to the board here in January to get approved. So right now technically and, and I am guilty of not communicating anything about the background screen policy for judges because I knew it was going to be changing or hopefully changing. So no judge has gotten an email other than the judges committees from the various sport discipline groups that have given them a heads up that all judges may be getting background screened here down the, down the road. That's since changed, um, like I mentioned. So nothing's been communicated yet after the board meeting. If the board approves it, then it will be communicated on who needs to be background screened, uh, moving forward. And that would be just appointed national judges or ju- appointed judges for national championships and, um, and IWWF level events. So that's what's on the screen now. So again, apologies to all the judges that are out there that have not heard anything from us because it is kind of a moving target. And until we can nail it down, um, we fail to communicate anything yet. But I think this will hopefully be, um, be a change that will be more openly accepted, uh, accepted, I guess. Um, and not every judge will have to get background screened. I know that was a pain point for a, a lot of folks initially that all judges were going to have to get background screened. So any questions on, on that part of it?
Yeah, somebody asked if you could, if you could define appointed judges at Nationals.
Well, again, you, you're looking at it through the, the lens of just water ski and we appoint judges. We, we, we call them appointed judges. Um, in the, in the USOPC policy, they say appointed officials. So basically what this means is if you're working a national championship event regardless of sport division and you're a judge, then you would have, you would fall under the criteria to get background screened. Whether you're appointed or assigned or whatever word that your sport discipline uses. If you're at that national championship event in the capacity of a judge, then you would fall under the policy. Now this would affect probably, I think, 75 people, um, each year versus 1,700 people that we have that are assistant judges and every other kind of form of judge. Between all the sport disciplines, there's only about 75 people total that fall under the requirement to need to get background screened according to the new policy. And USA Water Ski will cover the cost of that. So there will be no out of pocket expense for the judge to, to have to do that.
So two more questions on that. One is, um, are all, um, standings list and RC tournaments considered IWWF? And the other question was, does that mean that volunteer judges at Nationals need to be current?
Again, some, some sport disciplines call them different things. A volunteer judge and appointed judge, whatever. If you're a judge at a Nationals, then yes. Uh, to answer your question about the international events, it's really just, like for instance, this past year, there was the U19 for AWSA, the U19, U21 Elite or World Championships. There was the Elite World Championships here all held in the States. If you were one of those judges, which I think we only had one or two from the States, then you would be, um, uh, subject to the background screen. If you're selected by IWWF to go work somewhere else around the world, um, you would be subject to that same background screen as well. But really it's, it's for the national championship type of events and any events IWWF would hold here in the States.
Nate, this is Bob. Let me cut in. I'm, I'm reading a lot of, uh, chats here and, and you know, I'm going to ask everybody, be patient a little bit. We're trying to roll this out and we're nitpicking on little things. Um, it first looked like every judge on earth and every official on earth was going to have to take, uh, be background screened. Okay. And that was such a dawning task. We would lose uh, a great majority of everyone across all sports disciplines. And so when we kept going back and Nate through his associations with the other NGBs, found out what others were doing and that, hey, we're not cutting corners, but at least it's a good start. We got it down to judges and we found that when the NGB really approves a, a judge, uh, the only time they really have any involvement is at the national championships. And so it kind of falls, that's why national championships. So any judge that, uh, is listed to work at a national championships, and most of these comments look like they're AWSA, um, any judge that is going to work that, and let's not get into appointed versus assigned. If you are on that list of officials, um, you're going to have to be background checked. Um, if you happen to be pulled off the shore, that's a whole different ballgame. Because we didn't appoint that person. That's a last minute, uh, add-on. So, um, that's where the judges are. Um, uh, remember we, we don't really want to get into, into the weeds too much of, of appointed or assigned. Most, uh, most of our skiers and many of our officials don't even totally understand that. But, um, that's just where it came from. It's a work in process. Going back to a comment that Becky asked about safety, um, why aren't they on there? They're not on there only because, and we've challenged, I've challenged that as a safety director, as an instructor. Um, we, we, we've challenged some of this to try to get there, but we're, we're given some leeway into adding on the different officials. And if you really look at it long-term and one of the discussion points was, is that who has direct contact? And who has, um, uh, a position of influence? And if you really look at some of that, it would be a judge because a judge could be assigned to any, any, a tower, a boat, whatever. Uh, it would be a driver because they actually communicate with the skier and it would be safety. And so that might be the next group. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. But we've looked at so many different levels. Uh, let, let, let's try to work with it so we can all work together and kind of better understand it. But, uh, right now it's just those national officials that, uh, are on that original docket. Those guys that, you know, that get the rooms, those guys that get the, the lunches and that kind of stuff. That's who it's going to be for right now.
Okay. On to questions from people that had their hands raised. Um, Keith, you want to speak up?
Yeah, I do. Um, a- and this is going to sound like a criticism. I don't mean it to be directly, but semantics are extremely important and that's probably why you get a waterfall of questions on the chat. Uh, you know, Nate said that if you're a judge at the Nationals, if you had, you know, and again, volunteer and Bob, you said something different. Um, you know, the IWWF, uh, uh, events, you know, class L and class R tournaments are sanctioned. IWWF, you know, tournaments, the question out there that I've heard read was, do you have to have a background screen for a class L or class R tournament? I haven't heard an answer for that yet. I have heard it if it's an international tournament. In other words, if it's overseas, but you get a lot of skiers that are international skiers here, here in the US. So semantics are really important in this. And, and Bob, I appreciate you projecting your thoughts into the future, but let's not build conjecture into something that's already confusing. Let's keep this, you know, tell me exactly who needs to take this background screening. You know, likewise with the SafeSport, you know, Doug mentioned that, uh, if you compete in a tournament at SafeSport, Bob, you mentioned if you participate in a tournament. So immediately, you know, does the, the, the person sitting in the boat videoing tricks, does the dock starter, does, you know, a vendor who's got a tent at the Nationals, uh, do they all have to do SafeSport? I mean, semantics, you guys got to really get clear on the semantics here.
Okay.
Good point.
Yes, very good point. And, uh, Bob Harris, you get your hand up. Maybe he got tired of waiting. Um, okay, back to the chat. Is it possible that USA Water Ski Wake Sports could do the background checks, question mark? I would think that the number of, the number of those, uh, background checks that need to be done would warrant a discount for USA Water Ski and be much less than what we pay, um, than what we would pay. And we could check the box saying we gave permission to do it. Nate, do you want to get in the business of background checks?
Uh, not really. Um, then that kind of, before you get into the other questions, we'll, we'll get to those. But I just wanted to talk about the other two bullets on the last two bullets on my screen. It may answer this, this question here. So the vendor that we do have for the background screens called NCSI, um, it is sort of the recommended vendor of the USOPC. A lot of NGBs use them. We've used them for years and years and years. They were one company and then they changed their name to something else recently. One company and then they changed their name to something else recently. But when this was all going down, we did do an R F P. So a request for proposal from a number of different background screen companies. Think we've, we got to three where they each put proposals in there. Uh, they all have to check the same thing. So they're all checking from the US OPC criteria. Which I can show on my screen in a second. So all the different vendors are checking for the same thing. And they're going through a number of different databases to, to do these checks, both county, state, federal databases, criminal databases. You know, they're cross referencing a number of different things. There's no way that USA waterski could do a, a throw a background check on anybody, quite frankly. I mean. My, my background check would be a Google search, uh, so that, that's pretty much all that would come up. So um, that's who we use for the, the vendor. We've negotiated a, a price that we could get, the best one we could get. For what, what they conduct. Most of them are, are in the neighborhood. Within quarter or fifty cents of each other in terms of what they cost to, to do a background screen in order to fit the criteria. Um, so we're, we're happy with the vendor we have. And then. You know, the way it works is we're not privy to any of the information that is part of the background screen. Like when you put your information into the system. I don't see any of that. It's all encrypted and it's sent to the, the screening company who uses it to do their search. And, and that's it. It's not sitting in a database that, that is on our server somewhere that I can go and look up, you know, everyone's information. Not, I, I don't, I'm not privy to any of that. When we get the results back, it comes back basically as a red or a green. If there's an issue um, anywhere on the screen, it just comes back red. I have no idea what it is. All I know is it's been notified to us that there, this person. Um, did not thoroughly complete the, the screen. That uh, the US OPC related criteria. Um, and then from there, the individual can appeal that background script. Excuse me, they can appeal it directly with N C S I if they think the information is inaccurate. Or they can then also appeal it with USA waterski if they agree that, yes, something on there happened. But it was ten years ago and it was for possession of marijuana or something like that. Which will come up as a red on, on our uh, on their, on the screen. So you can appeal the actual. Background screen to USA waterski. It goes to a hearing panel. And um, they'll review that and if. If that pa- panel deems it to be um, okay, then, then you'll be able to participate. So there are processes in place. Um, again, the, the vendor is a respected vendor. And um, you know, the information in terms of what comes back is, is not. Privy to anyone here at USA waterski unless you do appeal it and then we actually see. You know, we'll ask you to share, share the background screen so we can see what you're appealing, but other than that. You know, no one here at Waterski even knows. You know, what, what happened if it's a red. So. I just wanted to go through that and then I'll answer some of the other questions that. You may have about background screens. Dale, if you want to pop them up.
Yep. So we had two people that said, thank you for a good meeting and they had to leave because they had early meetings in the morning. Have one that said, thank you for the meeting. The time was well spent. They completed their Safe Sport renewal program while we were on the call. Yep. Uh, the last one on chat that I'm current with right now is unfortunately, the leadership originally proposed that all officials would be background checked. The fact that such a pervasive approach was ever considered acceptable is why the topic blew up. That proposal got a lot of people very angry. I'm glad to see so much movement on the topic. So I don't think there's anything for you to answer there. Just comments.
So again, comments are good. You know. It's like I say, uh, so I referee basketball and I'll tell coaches all the time, I'll. I'll respond to questions, but not to comments. But so if you have comments, put them in there. I just may not respond to them right now.
And that one wasn't looking for you. Um. One second. I have one more here that says. Is it possible to do an appropriate background check without submitting Safe Sport?
Without submitting social security number, S S.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, so that question's come up as well. I've got a pretty lengthy response back from the N C S I as to why um, a social security number is necessary. And what we'll be doing is we'll be including a full. F A Q, very similar to the Safe Sport one about background screens. That will get into the weeds about all these things. Um, I don't want to misspeak right now on the phone. I don't have the email pulled up. But um, you know, there, there are reasons why these things are necessary. There are, they, there are background screens that can't be conducted without, without a social security number. They're not as accurate as the other ones that are in terms of the verification on different things. Uh, but anyway, that stuff will be addressed in this F A Q. And again, I'm not a background screen expert, so I can't really answer that one, but. That question's been posed before and it's, it will get answered in terms of the, the best way to do it.
And if I could add a comment to that, yeah, there's also been some conjecture and comments on Balla Spray about credit checks being run. That, that doesn't, there's verbiage that anytime a social security number is collected. That the uh, Fair Credit Reporting Act, you know, um, verbiage gets inserted in there. Now, I re- 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 I did my background check in the fall. And get a monthly report on my um, you know, personal private, personal information privacy service that. Monitors all that and there was no credit check ever done. Um, when I, uh, and I did have to uh, submit my social security number to have the background check run. N C S I has assured us it's used as an identifier. It's a key identifier. To complete the background checks and complete them accurately, as Nate said. Because again, I mean, there's people out there with multiple names. You know, there might be, you know, how many hundreds of Mark Smiths might be out there? We don't, you know, we don't know. So at any rate, that's, that's the big, the big thing with the social security number. Now. And also, uh, I wanted to touch on Keith's point. Keith, Keith, you made a great point on the semantics and thank you for that. And the background checks. If the proposal that risk management is bringing to the, you saw USA waterski and Wake Sports board. In a couple of weeks passes. According to what US OPC told us, it's a sign, appointed and assigned judges. At national and international events. Um, so that would include, of course, the chiefs. But. Chief, assistant chief, but anybody that's appointed or assigned to work those events. Would be who it, who is required to complete the background check. So that one's fairly easy. The Safe Sport, um, you're right, we have to get into a lot further definition on that. And I've made a note on that and we'll, we'll follow up on that as well. So uh, thank you for that.
And somebody else put a, not, put a cha- a note in the chat that their background or that their credit report. Is locked down and he's never had any issues with it as he did the, the um, the background check. So uh, Bob Harris, you're next online here.
Yeah, I was next in line about twenty minutes ago, Dale. Thanks for the three seconds you gave me to unlock my mic. Uh, so evidently raising your hand doesn't get into the queue. My question is to Nate. How firm is the agreement with US OPC and obviously the insurance? On who the people are that have to have the background check? The reason I ask is because one of the members of the board. Sent out an email with a warning, this was likely to change.
Well, what you see on the screen is the policy that, that we have to follow.
So that was not the question. How firm is the agreement on who has to have the background check?
Well, this is, this is the agreement on who has to have the background check. It's, it's, it's the people listed on the screen.
Those that serve. You just told everybody a, a couple of minutes ago. That it's the appointed for like A W S A, it's the appointed and signed officials at the Nationals.
Yes, that's part.
Appointed and assigned judges.
I said appointed and assigned judges. Thank you.
Yeah, so what we have to do is take this policy that you see on the screen here. That, that this is what we have to follow as long, along with every other N G B. And. With, you know, they don't say anything about judges in there. They say officials. And again, this is. We have to determine what that means. Now, again, in our terminology, officials means a, a much bigger, bigger thing or different thing than USA basketball. When you say officials, I know what that means. It means the referees, people in stripes. When you say officials for waterski. It, it's a number of different people. So that's what we had to identify. So this is the policy. What you see on the screen is what we have to follow. And then what we've done is kind of dug a little deeper into that to explain. For us in particular, what officials means, which will be. Appointed judges. At the national championship level events is how we're going to be wording it. So is that, I mean, that, I don't know if that answers your question, but there's more people that need to get background screened than just those appointed officials. It has to be these people as well. Um, our staff, you know, any coaches, board members, like all those different types of people that are listed on the screen.
Bob, is that?
Not really. I mean, that didn't answer the question because like for, let's just, my interest is A W S A. So in terms of who has to take, have the background check as a judge. And we'll narrow it down to just judges because you said it was only going to be the judges. And those were the appointed judges at the Nationals, appointed and signed judges at the Nationals. Is that firm?
It hopefully will be after the board votes on it, the motion to, to add that language.
Right now, Bob, it's what you see on the screen.
I understand that, but we've got something on the screen and something that's been said. In this meeting and in previous meetings, so I just want to clarify what it is. I'm getting asked questions. I need to be able to answer them.
Yeah, I understand. And, and um, you know, I've been asked some of the same questions and right now it's a pending situation. Um, it all depends on what the board. Uh, approves on the thirtieth.
Let's back up. My original question was, is it firm with the US OPC and insurance? Regardless of what the board decides at this point, my question was that because then the question is going to be if the board does not approve it, why?
Well, I don't think we'll know why until we get there. And I, I respect your question, but that's, I mean, you, we could speculate for hours on.
No, you didn't listen to my question. My first question was, is it firm with US OPC and insurance?
Yes, I mean, if they. Yeah, it's not going to affect regardless of what the board votes, it's not going to affect either one of those. Right, it's, it's fine either way.
Right, the insurance will be in place. The insurance is in place now. So the insurance is, is the, the liability is going to be in place. The. As far as US OPC, you referenced an agreement. Um, US OPC, we don't really have a. Agreement with US OPC. I mean, obviously if we send. Officials to the Pan Am Championships, which is US OPC event. They're going to want those people background checked. However. You know, in regards to an agreement, I mean, w- w- we don't have like an agreement with US OPC. What we have. Is we're an affiliated sport as a Pan Am sport with US OPC. And we're subject to these um, uh, compliance audits. So um, again, Nate went back to US OPC. After he learned how some other N G Bs, because. If I can give a little background on this just for a second. When, when the edict came down from US OPC. From our compliance audit that. They wanted all officials background screened. That's how they worded it. Well, that's, that's a lot. That's a big number for us. Um, so Jeff Clark wrote an appeal to that. And, or I'm sorry, not Jeff Clark, Jeff Smith wrote an appeal and filed it back to um, to US OPC. And further defined all of our different officials in all of our different sport disciplines. And basically looked at, you know. I guess, risk. And, you know, and, and further defined, you know, our judges really aren't. They're a panel. Uh, event judges are a panel. So they're, it's a little different than. That, you know, an individual, a, a, an official like at a wrestling match because you got one, one official. Right there who's, who's handling everything. So. US OPC came back initially and denied the appeal and they said, nope, all officials. Uh, because they're in a, in a, in a position of authority and influence over athletes. Particularly minor athletes. Then what took place um, was after, after all the feedback. Nate pursued this a little further with some of the other N G Bs and learned that there are some other N G Bs. That have different official roles like we do. And um, came to find out that, you know, certain, certain official roles. Were defined and, and that's where we came back to this compromise, Bob. So. If this compromise passes, um, we have standing. To defend it with, with US OPC and a compliance audit because it's being done, it's approved and it's being done for other N G Bs. And um. Uh, on the, on the insurance side, again, that they're. They just want to see measures taken place. And if we're able to say, these are our measures and we can list them. And we have multiple prevention measures. Uh, and we need to defend a claim with our insurance carrier. Uh, I think we've met their criteria as well, as Randy has outlined that to us. So that's from a layman's standpoint, that's kind of my view on it, but. You know, again, that's, uh, but it's a good question. Is it, is it, uh, was there something further that you? Were concerned about with that, Bob, or?
Well, the concern was the email that I'm mentioning that came out. And it said that as a warning, you know, that it was likely to change. So it sounded like somebody knew something. More than what is being uh, communicated to the organization.
And Bob, I was, this is Bob Arsham. Well, I was guilty of that because I actually paraphrased it. I was in speculation with a crystal ball, I believe. I can't remember exactly. And it was just to, you know, bring awareness that, hey, things are going to change.
Speculation at this point doesn't help anything. Because everybody wants to know what the facts are. And what agreements we have, what people are going to have to do. Because they're going to make decisions. And so speculation helps absolutely nothing at this point. That was my question about why was it a warning? About something and it sounded like there was more to it than what's being communicated. I think Doug answered the question.
Yeah, and I, I think our best answer at this point, Bob, for any member. Is let's, let's just hold tight until after the board meeting on the thirtieth. I mean. You know, by February one, this is all going to be. This is all going to be voted on by the board and. We'll be able to communicate to members exactly what the, what the requirements will be for twenty twenty two. And um, you know, hopefully they're, they're patient enough to, to uh, to accept that.
Okay, so what you're saying is it's now an internal decision. It's not a problem with US OPC. It's not a problem with insurance. It's internal. And it's up to the Board of Directors.
No, what I'm saying is, is that we have a, we have a adjusted. Updated proposal on both the background screens and the Safe Sport requirement. And both of those items um, have been blessed by risk management, by, I mean, US OPC. We know this is happening and, and. Approved in other uh, N G Bs. Nate went back to US OPC and got it blessed for us. So if these pass. You know, obviously these requirements will change. you know, obviously these requirements will change, uh, for 2022. They won't be as widespread. They won't be as, um, uh, you know, there won't be as many members affected.
Okay. Anything else, Bob?
No, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Keith, you had your hand up?
Uh, I do. Um, the, the way background checks and Safe Sport are administered appears to be different in a sense that the background checks come back, red flag or green flag and off we go unless a member decides to effectively challenge a red flag. And then it becomes an internal review of what specific the issues are. I've seen the issues of things that will be checked in the background check. I've, I, I can concur that I've had my own background checked on. I've, I've submitted my social security number. I have not gotten a credit check either. So I agree with those statements previously. Um, but if a, my, my question is, is there's the list of things that they're checking for. If something comes back as a red flag, how long or how far back do they check? That's question number one. Um, and so if there's anything that's occurred on that list back however many years, that will return a red flag. My question specifically is then, how does USA Water Ski intend to administer those that may very well have some historical issues that go, could go back many, many years, um, that really aren't an issue today? A- a- and explain how that compares to Safe Sport where once you kind of pay your penalty, if you will, if there's a Safe Sport violation that you've been found responsible for, then you can go right back to compete the next day and everything is fine with that. Um, I, 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 I guess I'm having some trouble justifying kind of the logic between the two.
Well, thank you. You're talking about two different types of, of, of things. So one is a, a general member able to participate. And the other is a select type of member, in this instance, a judge, uh, allowed to judge. So for instance, on your Safe Sport example, if Safe Sport does provide a sanction, then that member would serve that penalty. And then once that sanction is expired, they come back to being a regular member again. Um, when you're talking about a background screen, uh, we're not talking about someone's ability to participate as a regular member. We're talking about their ability to participate in the specific role that they got that background screen for, either a judge sitting on a board, uh, in a leadership position. So it's a little bit different. So they may not be able to sit on, on that leader, on that board if they failed the background screen. Or they may not be able to participate as a judge if they failed the background screen, but that would not, um, eliminate them from participating as a member. Now, again, um, so we're not requiring background screens for all member participation. And again, you can do a number of what is this and what if that's, and I mean, there's many, a thousand of those out there, but that's essentially the premise. It's, um, you know, one's for membership participation and the other one is for participation in serving in a specific role.
Oh, okay. Um, I, I appreciate that. Um, a- a- and I also understand that the Safe Sport investigations aren't necessarily a legal, uh, investigation. So there is obviously a difference there as well. Ho- however, I guess I would challenge the USA Water Ski Board and Risk Management Committee to consider, um, being very clear about what our policy as an organization is, uh, for those types of situations. You know, if the logic behind a background check is that it could point to some sort of past that may be a predictor for the future. Um, you know, by definition, if you've been sanctioned by Safe Sport, you will not pass a background check, uh, based on that list. Again, the legal, uh, issues notwithstanding. You know, but if we allow that particular person or people to come back and compete again, you know, that's okay, but we ought to be really clear as an organization in terms of what our policy is, our internal policy is on that. Because they don't seem to be the same level of standard, uh, from one versus the other. I, I, I appreciate your explanation, Nate, between a, a judge or a board member versus a, you know, a skier. But if we're talking about safety of people on site and exposure to risk, et cetera, those are some additional issues that, that kind of rise to the occasion when it gets to that point. So, uh, it might be worth, you know, legitimately reviewing that policy or those policies that are associated with that at the membership level and make sure that we're all comfortable with those.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, Nate, I don't think you ever expected this, but there's no hands raised and there's no unanswered questions in chat.
All right, good. I only have one more slide and I'll go very quick, uh, for the sake of time. Because this was another thing that sort of came up earlier on, uh, in, in a lot of the, um, questions and emails and stuff that, that were circulating around the USOPC affiliation and what does it mean and why do we do it? And, you know, Randy already mentioned it before, you know, I guess there was some talk at one time that, you know, if you disassociate with the USOPC, then all these things will go away. You know, we don't have to do any Safe Sport. There won't be any background checks. Not completely true. You know, there will, some things, like for instance, we would not necessarily have to follow the USOPC background check policy to a T like we do now. But we would still have to do things like Safe Sport or something similar, uh, in order to follow the federal law. So I just wanted to just talk really quick about, uh, just a couple of little bullet points around the affiliation and what it means. Obviously it gives credibility, um, to the sport, especially those in the eyes of, of non-water skiers, uh, media, sponsors, those types of folks. Having that affiliation, um, legitimizes the organization. Uh, there is a, an, an obvious element with the IWWF and international competition. You know, since we're the recognized governing body with a sole entity that can send national teams or athletes to represent the US on an international level at these IWWF, um, recognized events, um, both in water ski and wakeboard and, and every other sport discipline in between. So without having that, uh, affiliation, as the recognized water ski governing body by the USOPC, we would lose that element with IWWF. Um, there is a, there is an element of funding as well, uh, that's important to the overall operation of the organization. Uh, we get about a hundred thousand dollars a year from the USOPC in the form of various restrictive grants, um, really to help support the organization, uh, through staffing in terms of governance and compliance. So, uh, a portion of someone's salary here on staff that is, um, that they're, one of their main responsibilities is, is with working on compliance with Safe Sport and the USOPC. Uh, they help cover that cost. Um, we do get some dollars in the form of a digital media agreement from them to, to use their website platform. So I know that was a big issue of, uh, debate when they first launched last year, whenever it was. I mean, I agree, the website's not the greatest, but it also comes with about fifty thousand dollars to be on that web, website platform. Um, so there's a monetary incentive to do that. And then they also provide some dollars for, uh, for our, our accounting service that we use. So all that put together makes up a little less than 10% of our whole operating budget. So it is a significant amount of money, uh, to the organization, uh, for the affiliation. And then we mentioned the US Center for Safe Sport as well. Um, not only does it provide the training, um, which we have to go out and figure out on our own, but more importantly, it provides the exclusive jurisdiction, uh, when it comes to investigating these allegations. Because again, if it, if it wasn't for them, it, the independent third party that's doing these things, we would have to do these on our own through our own internal grievance processes and not necessarily we're sure we're, we're equipped to fully, um, investigate allegations of sexual misconduct on our own, uh, either. So, um, and then just to kind of get a sense of, of what we contribute to Safe Sports. So we do, I think Doug mentioned it earlier, we pay about sixty five hundred dollars a year uh, to the center, or actually it doesn't go to the center anymore. It goes to the USOPC and the USOPC on behalf of all the NGBs puts in about twenty million dollars. Um, total, and two million of that comes from the, from various NGBs. Uh, and there's a mod, there's a formula that's in place to determine how much money each NGB puts in. It's based on your revenue and it's based on your number of cases, um, and, and some other factors as well. But for that small amount we're putting in, I think it provides a pretty good service, uh, one that we could not afford to do on our own. That's for sure. At least, um, not for sixty five hundred bucks anyway, but. Anyway, that, uh, any questions about the USOPC affiliation? I mean, that's, we've talked a little bit about this throughout the night in, in, in various ways, but, um, I just wanted to sort of clarify that as well because that's come up in the past.
Um, Nate, before we, uh, before we adjourn for the night, would you touch on the MAP policies? Um, I'm not sure. Did we cover that? For, for local tournaments? What, what local organizers are going to need to do for MAP policies in, in 2022?
Yeah. So the MAP policies, the minor athlete abuse prevention policies are, are coming from the Center for Safe Sport as well. And there's really not necessarily any additional things that LOCs need to do that they haven't done in the past. With the exception of, um, of sending a communication out to participants of every event thirty days prior to that event, letting the participants know what the MAP policies are and how to report abuse if they see it. So it's really just an email. Um, or you can have, uh, in addition to the, if you don't send out an email, you can have something on site that's, um, like a poster or a, a, a printout that has a QR code that links to the MAP policies. Um, so really all we're asking in, in a perfect world is for LOCs that do communicate with the participants prior to an event. If you're going to send them directions on where to go, where to park, what to bring, what to do, that you simply include the links to this, uh, MAP policy and that satisfies the requirement for that. So it's one of the things that say, the Safe Sport audit will look at is that policy that we have that communicates to, to, uh, participants thirty days prior to a sanctioned event. Um, I realize that not every LOC sends emails. Some do, some don't. You know, we're trying to find a way to be able to do that on our own. Uh, electronically automated wise. I know like through the OLR system and AWSA, uh, we're working on ways to, if someone signs up for that, um, tournament, that they will get an automatic email from the system with all these different things in there. Um, and it's really just a cut and paste. We have, um, the language that you would need to do already done for you. You just got to cut it, put it in an email and send it out. Um, that's really it in terms of the MAP, the different MAP policies. None of the other stuff has really changed. Uh, there's some stuff in there just about, um, not really about the map, but more about if you're going to have signed waivers and stuff, you need to keep those and sign those. That, none of that stuff has changed. Um, I know there were some concerns that LOCs had way more additional work or liability and, and it's not necessarily the case. If anything, it's, it's, it's one email you have to send prior to your event. And you don't even need to write it. It's already written for you. You just need to cut and paste it. So I don't know if I answered your question there, Doug, but, um.
Yeah, no, I think you answered Delaina's question too, because she had a question on the, on the chat. Um, about automating the sending of those emails. And, um, Delaina, that is, Nate said, that's something that's being worked on through. So if you're, if you're using the online registration for your events, um, that's something that's being worked on to automate that sending of that email.
The automating process or the email process, Doug? Because currently we have the email process and I'm sorry, but it does not work very well.
Okay.
You might get an email to get, you might get, be able to use the OLR process to send an email about 25% of the time and I'm being generous.
Okay. Um, we had some, we had some theme, some feedback that it's not the most u- user friendly, um, uh, process, but, but that it does work. Um, so, but yeah, I mean, if you have anything specific in regards to that, send it to us. And then we can move, we can, of course, you know, send that on to the folks that program it and make it, make it work. So if, if, if there's improvements to be made, we can certainly make them.
Yeah. And again, I mean, at the end of the day, and I think I've told, uh, either our executive committee or our board, the last time we had a phone call, I mean, we are, we're, we're all kind of in this together. I mean, this, this, we're all on the same team, you know, and we're not, we're not trying to, to make life difficult for anybody. What we're trying to do is, is be compliant with the folks we need to be compliant with. We're trying to protect the athletes, the minor athletes that, um, that, that can't protect themselves and we're trying to do it the best way we, we can. Um, you know, I know it's, it's not, again, one size fits all and everyone's going to be happy with everything, but you know, we're a small community. Again, we are on the same team. We're all working together for the same common goal. So I think if we can, um, we'll get through it in terms of the, some of the bumpy roads, but, um, you know, I wanted to thank everybody too for joining the call. It lasted way longer than I anticipated. But, um, I think it was helpful, you know, to those that participated. Thank you for your questions and your comments. They're all noted. Like Bob said, we're going to collect these and go back and discuss the things we can discuss. And I think it's been helpful. It's something we'll look to do in the future for sure. Have more of these, continue an open dialogue so that you guys don't feel like you've been blindsided with anything. If you do, we apologize, but it wasn't the intent. You know, my, my intent since the first day I've gotten here has been all about transparency. So I'm happy to answer any question you have offline. If you want to send me an email or give me a call, I'll do my best, you know, we're, um, we've got nothing to hide. We're all, again, we're all on the same team. We're trying to, we're trying to make it the best organization we can. So with that, I think, uh.
Real quick, comment to Doug, to Delaina, one of the things that I found in dealing with communications, and this partially comes from my experience with the IWWF database, is there's a lot of people that don't even know what their own email address is. And, and expressing the need to keep your profile as current as possible becomes really critical. Especially when you're dealing with electronic communication and the avenues we're having to put into place nowadays. Um, and I don't disagree. It's not the most user friendly, but I, I find it more often than not, the, the challenge that comes into play is just inaccurate information. Uh, I can't tell you the number of times that I've seen, uh, an AOL dot C, CM or COMM or something like that, that you know is the wrong email address, but there's nothing you can do about it. So just my two cents.
Thanks, Bob. Um, and one last comment I just want to make before we adjourn. Um, you know, we talk a lot about the minor, the protection of our minor athletes. But Safe Sport doesn't just protect the minor athletes. It's for all of us. Um, so let's just keep that in mind, you know, as we move forward as well. Um, because, you know, there have been Safe Sport violations that involve two adults that, you know, one was stalking another. Um, so, you know, we need to, um, we need to be mindful that, that, you know, it, it, it extends beyond just sexual abuse. I mean, it's, it's harassment. It's, it's, um, you know, hazing. It's, it's, uh, bullying. It's, there's a lot of components to it that extend beyond just minors. So, um, just wanted to leave us with that, uh, before we adjourn.
Okay.
I think we're all good. And I want to thank Dale for, uh, letting us use his team's account here too, to, we had over a hundred people at one point, which I think is great. Shows your dedication and passion for the sport. And to the thirty eight people that are left here almost three hours later, thanks for sticking with us. Um, and again, if you have any follow-up questions, I think you guys know all the cast of characters here. You got my email, you got Doug and you got Bob's. Feel free to reach out to any of us and we'll, we'll try to get back to you with an answer. So, thanks, guys. Have a good night. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.